We're doing today. Are these live all the time?
Yes.
Mike check, one, two.
Good morning, everyone. If we could all take our seats. Members, senators. And I'd like, now that we've all been seated, if we could all rise for the invocation offered by Representative Rick Roth.
Good morning, everyone. Abide with me, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we are just so thankful for this day. We're so thankful for the great state of Florida and for this country we live in, Lord, this country that was founded on your precepts, that we have the right to determine our destiny by voting and participating in government because we are sovereign individuals. Lord, we are so blessed to live in the greatest county in the state of Florida, and, Lord, we are so blessed to have such good public servants, serving you as state representatives, state senators, county commissioners, city council members. Lord, I just pray right now in the name of Jesus for more civility, more good public discourse with respect and honor towards everyone speaking. We all have a right to our beliefs and our feelings and what we'd like to have done, but I ask, Lord, in your name, that we have more civility in these trying times. I ask you to bless this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. And now, please continue to stand for the pledge by Senator Polsky.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot. Oh, your mic is on. Are they all live?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If we could all remember to silence our phones right now. And welcome to Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation Local Bill and Public Hearing. I want to thank the AG Center for allowing us the use of their facility. And I hear we have Ronald Race here with the Cooperative Extension. He's the Cooperative Extension Director of the Clayton-Hutchinson Agricultural Services Center. Did you care to say a couple of words, sir?
Thank you, Representative Caruso. Well, good morning, senators, representatives, constitutional officers, county administrators, and community leaders that are here with us today. I'm honored that our Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation selected the Extension Department to host your meeting today. It's a meeting that focuses on ideas and actions that can help the good people of Palm Beach County. It's a meeting that can also support the good work carried out by our local governments. Now, I can say right now, you can all relax, since I don't have any legislative requests to make of you. But I'd like to spend a few minutes to give you an overview about what our Extension Department is all about. When we're fully staffed, we're about 50 people on campus, another five out in the Glades area. We are a county government department with a strong partnership with the University of Florida. And actually, 12 of us, the Extension agents, which includes me, are employees of both institutions. Where both institutions share the same mission, to help improve the lives of Palm Beach County citizens through science-based and evidence-based learning opportunities. And basically, we want to help people. And we address a number of disciplines, and I'll start with agriculture and horticulture. Our ag and horde extension agents deliver seminars, hands-on workshops, field day site visits, that promote science-based recommendations for farmers, plant nursery operators, professional landscapers, and homeowners. Our Master Gardener and Mount's Botanical Garden programs teach Florida-friendly landscaping principles to the general public. Four of us are state-certified for the green industry as trainers, so we teach professional landscapers and pest control operators to follow state-mandated environmentally sensible fertilizer irrigation and pest control best management practices. And at frequent requests from our agriculture and plant nursery partners, we deliver a wide variety of safety trainings to keep their workforces safe. Many of you are familiar with 4H already. We have a very robust 4H youth development program in Palm Beach County, which delivers endless opportunities in STEM education, including agriculture, the sciences, and the environment. Our 4H activities emphasize the development of critical life skills for our kids, including things like community citizenship, leadership, critical thinking, healthy living habits, public speaking, aspirations for higher education. Our 4H program actively pursues inclusion, diversity, equity, and access themes, which include several programs that target youth on the spectrum. Now, just as an aside, several years ago, I joined a 4H marine science camp where we helped the Nova University research team tag sharks in the Atlantic. Quite the adventure. Hey, you know, join 4H and you too can have the opportunity to hug a nine-foot tiger shark. I mean, that really happened, all right? And I don't think risk management was very happy about that. We have another discipline, family and consumer sciences, and our agents help people develop family life skills. Things like debt reduction, living on a budget, achieving first-time homeownership, maintaining healthy homes, strengthening family financial wellness. And we also run two federal grant programs that target disadvantaged communities of diversity to teach healthy nutrition behaviors, adoption of healthy living habits, food shopping on a sensible budget. Unique to all the 67 county extension offices in Florida, we have the 14-acre Mount's Botanical Garden. The county leadership at Mount's, along with amazing support from our nonprofit agency, Friends of the Mount's Botanical Garden, have combined to create an amazing garden venue for our county residents and tourists alike. What's really cool is that the Mount features specialty gardens that go well beyond horticulture themes, to emphasize things like water resource conservation, wetland ecosystems, art-inspired garden installations. Our trained docents and volunteers excite the general public with their unique horde education programs, with a big focus on youth education and garden well-being experiences. And these teams align perfectly with the Extension mission. So after your meeting ends today, I hope you'll join our curator-director, Rochelle Walberg, senators and representatives. She has a plan for a quick garden tour for you, which includes a visit to a unique garden feature that enjoyed its grand opening just last night.
We look forward to it, Director.
So you'll be the first folks to see this feature. So in closing, thank you so much for joining the Extension Department today for your delegation meeting. In the future, as you conduct your work in Tallahassee, if you run across our IFIS delegation, just have a chat with them. Your support for IFIS also supports this great partnership we have here between Palm Beach County Extension Department, Mount's Botanical Garden, and UFIFIS. Appreciate your attention. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And, you know, if anybody has not had a chance to visit the botanical gardens outside, they are absolutely beautiful, and I hear there's plans to bring them to a world-class level, so we look forward to that in the future. Thank you. Thank you for attending today. We appreciate you wearing masks at all times during the hearing. If you do not wish to wear a mask or do not feel you will be able to continue to do so throughout the full hearing, we ask that you please, please make other plans to... You can view this online or on TV. You may watch the hearing live on the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation Facebook page. Those who wish to speak to any of the local bills being heard today or would like to speak during public comments, need to fill out a blue public comment request form and turn it into Kristi Fernley, Legislative Aid to Rep. David Silvers. Kristi, where are you? There you are, right over here. If you could bring her the blue sheet, blue form, that would be great. Workshops between the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation and Palm Beach County League of Cities, the Palm Beach Board of County Commissioners, and Palm Beach County School Board will take place on Wednesday, November 10, 2021, at Palm Beach Gardens City Hall at 10-500 North Military Trail, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, 33410. The league will begin at 9:00 a.m. and end at 10:30. The Palm Beach Board of County Commissioners will begin at 10:45 and end at 12:15, and the school board will begin at 1:30 and end at 3:00. Our final public hearing will be held on December 8 from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at the Dolly Hand Cultural Arts Center at 1977 Southwest College Drive in Belgrade, Florida, 33430. So we'll be out in Senator Polsky's territory and Representative Skidmore's district. Today's hearing is being livestreamed on the Palm Beach Legislative Delegation Facebook page. Replays of today's meeting will be shown on Palm Beach County PBC TV, available on Comcast Channel 20, AT&amp;T Channel 99, and streamed 24/7 on the county's website, pbcgov.com. Vicky, would you call the roll, please?
Senator Berman, here. Senator Harrell, here. Senator Polsky.
Here.
Senator Powell. Representative Caruso.
Here.
Representative Casello. Representative Hardy. Representative Roth.
Here.
Representative Silvers. Representative Slossberg.
Here.
Representative Skidmore.
Here.
Representative Snyder. Representative Will Height.
Here.
Representative Powell, just walked in.
Senator Powell.
Senator Powell.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more.
Good timing, Senator.
Thank you.
And would we, if we could start down there with Representative Roth, if you could just say a very, very brief introduction?
Good morning, all. I did want to make one comment. Clayton Hutchinson is a good friend of mine, and contrary to maybe what you might think about famous buildings, like the Clayton Hutchinson Building, he is still alive. He was the county extension director for over 30 years. I do have my aides, I believe, I do have Sheila Jackson with me, if she'll stand and wave, my aide, and also have John Carter, if he's in the audience, if he's got here yet. I do have my aides. I do represent the northeast quadrant of Palm Beach County, large area north of Okeechobee Boulevard, west of I-95, going all the way out to Arden, including most of the acreage, and Ibis Country Club and Palm Beach Gardens, a big district, Palm Beach Gardens, North Palm Beach, Juno, Jupiter Farms, District 85. It's my pleasure to serve. I'm a native of Palm Beach County, and I feel like I'm serving all of you. Thank you.
And Representative Slossberg, would you, a very short introduction?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Emily Slossberg. I represent House District 91, Boca Delray and Boynton Beach, between Military and the Turnpike. My legislative assistants are not here today, but they're watching on Channel 20, Ed Sol and Thomas Wilmouth.
Senator.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I am State Senator Gail Harrell. I represent District 25, which includes all of Martin and St. Lucie Counties, and a small portion of Palm Beach County. And I'm delighted to include Palm Beach in the district as well, and that includes Jupiter Farms, parts of Loxahatchee, and the city of Pahokee. I'm delighted to be here.
Thank you. Senator Powell.
Good morning, everyone. I am State Senator Bobby Powell Jr., representing Senate District 30 in Palm Beach County. My staff are Diane Andre Esquire and Kirsty Miles Esquire. Thank you for the opportunity. A life of service is a life that counts.
Representative Will Height.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for having us today. My name is Matt Will Height, I represent the 86th District in the Florida House, representing West Palm Beach, Wellington, Royal Palm Beach, Loxahatchee Grove, Havre Hill, and parts of unincorporated Palm Beach County. I do have, by new titles, members. My Legislative Aid, Tom Valio, is here, and District Aid, Melissa Santoro. Thank you for allowing us to serve each and every one of you, and thank you for the festivities here, Vicky, but I wish everybody a happy and safe Halloween. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Senator Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Lori Berman. I represent Senate District 31. It's central Palm Beach County. It's basically Delray to Lake Worth, the ocean to the Turnpike. I have my legislative assistants here, Abby Ross and Daniel De La Grange, if you can wave somewhere in the audience, Abby too. And happy early Halloween to everyone here.
Thank you, Representative.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Kelly Skidmore. I represent House District 81, which is west of the Turnpike, Boca Raton, Delray Beach, Boynton Beach, Lake Worth, a tiny bit of Wellington, and then out into the Glades, Pahokee, South Bay, and Belgrade. Happy to be here today with my three aides, my Legislative Aid, Dr. Gwen Gonzalez, my District Aides, Amy Chamberlain and Kadira Willis.
Senator Polsky.
Thank you, Chair. I'm Senator Tina Polsky, representing District 29, which covers south and western Palm Beach County, as well as parts of Broward. Thank you. Oh, sorry. My aides are here. J.J. Piscadlo and Daphne Fernandez are here, I believe. Thank you.
And Senator Polsky is our vice chair. We'll go back to Senator Harrell for recognition.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I did forget to introduce my aide. Well, Karen Sweeney is not with us today. She is at home, but Carrie Lyra, where are you, Carrie? Way back there. If you have any questions or need any assistance, be sure and see Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I'm State Rep. Mike Caruso, District 89. My district runs from Boca Raton all the way to Singer Island along the coastline. My District Aid, my Legislative Aid, Walter Boikis, is somewhere in the room, and if you'd stand up and give a wave. I don't see him, but he was here a minute ago. And thank you, members. Let's see, elected officials, I understand we've got a few in the room. If you would stand up after I call your name, give a wave. We thank you for being here. Mayor Robert Shore from Loxahatchee Grove. Thank you. Robert Shalhood, Vice Mayor of Lake Clark Shores. Paul Shalho, Mayor of Lake Clark Shores.
Paul is the mayor now?
I think they're related. Ken Castle, City Manager of Westlake. In the back, thank you. You're hiding back there. James Titcomb, Loxahatchee Grades.
Groves.
Groves. Yeah, grades. Yeah. Oh, boy. That would be, yeah. Okay. I hear they're alive and well there in Loxahatchee Grove. It is Halloween.
Chair, happy Halloween to you.
Happy Halloween. Thank you, yes. And Roger Manning, Mayor of the City of Westlake, in the back again. So thank you, elected officials, for joining us today. And if I missed anybody...
Dan Clark, Lake Clark Shores.
City Manager. Okay, great. Thank you.
Abruzzo. Joe Abruzzo.
No, no, they're going to... They're on the agenda. Yes, but thank you. Okay, so we will move to... Just want to remind everybody, we've got five hours of work to do today, and we have two hours and 40 minutes to get it done. So if we could, if public comments, keep them short. Constitutional officers, keep it brief. Try to keep it to two minutes. And if all of us could just be brief in our comments and our questions, make them pointed and directed, and we'll get through it in time. We all be out of here for lunch. So moving on to the constitutional officers, the Honorable Glenn Kelly, Chief Judge, 15th Judicial Circuit Court. You have the floor, sir.
Well, good morning, members of the delegation. First question I always ask jurors when I speak to them in the morning, through this mask, can you hear me?
No.
Okay. I like to keep on time. I like my lawyers to keep on time, so I'm going to try to keep my comments brief. Certainly, I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly to the delegation this morning. And I would just say upfront, if anyone on the delegation has any questions about the court system locally, my door is open. Please come and see me at any time. Just call. I'll be happy to take the call if you want to come in or meet with me. That's fine. I think all of you probably have received, hopefully received, a summary of the judicial branch legislative budget request, which contains certain items of expenditures that the court system will be looking for in the coming legislative session. I just want to briefly touch on two of them very, very quickly. There are a number in here, but the ones I think that are most important to the trial courts would be the request for non-reoccurring expenses for pandemic relief. This would just be part of the second-year plan. Last year, the court system asked for and received from the legislature monies that would be used to hire additional magistrates, law clerks, case managers, senior judges to try to work on the backlog created by the pandemic. We're requesting funding for the second year of that. I think that's extremely important. What goes right along with that is a request to update certain technology. We have learned through the pandemic that technology can be extremely helpful in keeping the court system functioning and efficient. Much of that money would go to things like Zoom licenses, using digital and remote court reporting and interpreting, things of that nature, where we use better the technology that we have. We've learned an awful lot through the pandemic. A lot of things we've learned are going to stick, and I think we're going to use them in the future. I do want to keep closely to my time, and so I'm just going to say I appreciate the opportunity to be here and to present before the Legislative Delegation, but for more in-depth discussion of any of the issues that touch upon the courts, I please invite you to, you know, come see me anytime, call me, have one of your aides call me. I'll be happy to speak to you. If I do not know the answer, I will know who to send you to, and so I look for the opportunity to work with each of you. And with that said, I'll sit down, let you get through your agenda.
Thank you, Judge. I know a number of us serve on appropriations committees in that arena, so we hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, I would mention on there is a raise for trial court judges, but it'd be kind of self-serving for me to talk about that, so I'm not going to raise that. I'll leave that for others to advocate on our behalf, but there's a lot of things in there that obviously touch upon the trial courts.
And Judge, before you go, Senator Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one quick question. As a result of the pandemic, has the courts become more... Have you put in place more recording systems in the courthouse for Zoom meetings and things like that?
Yes, and we've been very, frankly, we've been very fortunate in Palm Beach County because we get a lot of support from Palm Beach County itself in terms of funding, and we have added to all of the courtrooms monitors, cameras. Most of our civil courtrooms, there's a difficulty in your criminal setting because you have constitutional rights to confrontation, so it's difficult to do things in criminal remotely. Certainly on the civil side, we have added cameras and monitors, and we have the ability in those courtrooms to conduct Zoom hearings. We even have the opportunity, I've tried jury trials coming out of the pandemic myself, the opportunity to present witnesses remotely, and so we have that technology. A lot of circuits are not as fortunate as Palm Beach County, and they need the funding to do that. We still need funding for some things, but we have been very fortunate in Palm Beach County with respect to the resources that we do have.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
And now, we can hear from our tax collector, Ms. Ann Gannon. You're recognized.
Good morning. My name is Ann Gannon. I'm the Palm Beach County Tax Collector. I have three issues I'd like to talk with you about. One is a mobile home bill, which is going to change the date of a renewal for a mobile home to an owner's birthday, and that's being done because of the workloads in our offices. The other is, one other issue is tax certificate sales. Florida has a tax certificate sale system that is the model for the rest of the country. It strikes a careful balance between taxpayers, local taxing authorities, and investors. We believe the bill that is being sponsored by my very good friend, Representative Caruso, has unintended consequences changing the law to favor certain investors over and against other investors. This issue was litigated several years ago with the same cast of characters who are now proposing this bill, and the bill is proposing to overturn the careful decision the judge issued, which ensures fairness for all bidders. The end result in this process used now ensures that county, school boards, and other taxing districts receive the highest amount of revenue possible to actually fund their budgets. The other issue I want to talk with you about was an issue in the Senate that was an amendment on a bill that was defeated, and the House bill didn't move. There seems to be some misinformation about what's going on with this, and in 2017, the Constitutional Revision Commission passed Amendment 10 to be placed. It was placed on the 2018 ballot, and it did pass. And one of the issues included in this amendment returned the power to the voters to determine who will serve as their sheriff, clerk of the court, property appraiser, tax collector, and supervisor of election. This amendment protected Florida citizens by ensuring that constitutional officers report directly to the voters and the people they serve. There are only three counties, well, actually, two counties now, that do not elect all constitutional officers, and that's Miami-Dade and Broward. And by the year 2024, those elections will occur, and they will all be elected constitutional officers. The Department of Motor Vehicles during this transition period has retained DL licensing until the election of a tax collector in Miami-Dade and Broward. In those two counties, most of the titling and registration of vehicles, vessels, and mobile homes is completed by licensed private tag agencies. These agencies do not perform driver's license services. Both counties have contracts with the PTAs, of which there's about 40 of them in those two counties, allowing them to charge fees outside of the statutory requirements that tax collectors must abide by. These fees are set by county ordinance. It has never been clear if these agencies have the legal authority to charge fees outside of the statutory requirements. The introduction of this bill would have allowed LPAs to complete four transaction types currently available on the MyDMV portal. These transaction types do not charge clients using this portal a fee for completion of transactions. The requests completed on the state portal are mailed directly from Tallahassee. And what is being proposed is that a client who walks into an LPTA in Miami-Dade or Broward and completes these transactions will now be charged a fee, and they're no longer charged a fee if it's done through that portal and it comes out of Tallahassee and is mailed from Tallahassee. Any of these services can be completed in the nine DL offices, of which two are supercenters to meet the needs of the community. Allowing LPAs to perform four DL transactions is a disservice to the client, as they now will have to pay for services accessible at no charge, and the transaction completion will still be mailed from Tallahassee with additional wait time. And if the transaction occurs, are the LPAs, until the tax collector is elected, going to petition the Miami-Dade Commission and the Broward Commission under the same arrangements that exists for titling and registration and increase fees to the public? Once a tax collector is elected, these fees are not allowable under Florida statutes. So what they're asking is to create a special fee that they're allowed to change, and the way they actually implement the fee is to go to the county commission and get an ordinance passed that allows them to increase the fees for people in Miami-Dade and Broward. So I think there was some misinformation about this issue. I kept hearing this is about private business and we need to support them. It's not really about private business. And there are two other pieces of information in your packet that explains in detail some of the issues that the Department of Motor Vehicles has raised about this process, so if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And I would ask you to vote no on this.
We hear that loud and clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our Clerk of Circuit Court and Comptroller, Joseph Abruzzo. Is he here? He's there.
Mr. Chairman, with your indulgence, Supervisor Link has a funeral to attend, if that is okay?
Yes, no problem at all. Wendy Link, Supervisor of Elections, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, honorable members of our delegation. I appreciate the opportunity. Given your timing, I am going to try to keep it very close and succinct. I believe you all already have a copy of the Florida Supervisor of Elections, so I won't waste your time going through each of them. If you have any questions, though I do encourage you, please call me, or I'm happy to call you to speak about any of these priorities that we have. The one thing I did want to cover is on the bottom, this is not part of the full states' priorities, but it is a priority for Palm Beach County that I wanted to address with you, and that is that we currently have for early voting, the opportunity for one wild card site. So as opposed to Election Day, where we can really go to most places as long as they're ADA compliant, any place that we can work out a contract with, we can have a site there. For early voting, the statute is very limiting in terms of... site there. For early voting, the statute is very limiting in terms of where we are able to have early voting sites. And the way our county has grown, we don't have a lot of those sites. So as we're trying to increase locations or change locations to better fit the patterns of our voters, we're very limited. Every county is allowed one wildcard site. We currently have been using ours at FAU Boca campus. We would like to try to keep that one, but we have needs to be in other places that don't have any place else we could go. So we can find other places in Boca. We cannot find other places in some other places, in other parts of the county. So a county our size, as you know, larger than some states, to have the same number of wildcard sites as very, very small, geographically small counties, just doesn't make a lot of sense. So we're asking for either some accommodation to allow us to have additional wildcard sites so that we can better serve our voters, or to give us a little flexibility on the types of sites that we can use. So that's the, I'm happy to talk about that more if you have any questions at any point. And as I leave, I'd be remiss if I didn't, I'm sure you all already know, but we did receive about eight o'clock last night, the Governor's Executive Order setting the House District 88 race. So that race is now going to be on January 11th, will be the primary, which is also the same time as the general for CD 20. So there'll be some overlap, and we have to work some things out so that voters don't have to actually look at where they have overlapping precincts, trying to work it out with the state where we could combine those elections and not actually make the voter check in twice. So we're going to be working that out today. So that'll be early voting for that. Will begin on New Year's Day, and that's because the statute requires that it start 10 days ahead. So, and then the general for that is going to be on March 8th, which is also the day that we have our municipal elections. And the early voting for that will start on the 26th, I think is of February. So we're looking forward to getting that race underway. And qualifying, I believe, is going to be, I didn't read, haven't had a chance to look at all the dates, but I think it's been November. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you very much.
We do have questions. Representative Skidmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Does the wildcard need legislation, or is that something the Secretary of State can change?
I believe it's statutory that tells us that we're allowed one site, and it tells us the type of sites we can use. So I believe it would require legislation.
Senator Pell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Supervisor Link, for your excellent election in the fall last year. My question is, right now, we're in the midst of election for Congressional District 20, and this is like a test run for the legislation that we've recently passed. What are you seeing in terms of, we passed Senate Bill 90, has that, are the too small of an election to really tell, has that impacted the number of people who are voting right now?
It is a little bit of a small, especially for Palm Beach County, since we only have 30% of the voters in that area. But I will say, it certainly has caused additional expense, and it has, in fact, I can give one example this morning, because our drop boxes now have to be attended to by our staff. And in the past, they just had to have video surveillance 24/7, and at night, we had Palm Beach County Sheriff's deputies watching them so that there would be no mischief during the evening hours. Now that we have to have them guarded because of budgetary constraints and others, we have limited those hours. We begin at 7:00. Well, my office told me at 6:30, somebody was there trying to put their ballot in this morning. So I think the drop boxes not being 24/7, just because we can't have our staff attending to them, and it's no longer acceptable for us to have a sheriff's deputy there. Otherwise, we would have worked that out. So I think that that has certainly had an impact. In terms of voting, I mean, these special elections never have huge turnout. Percentage-wise, we are actually slightly ahead of Broward County in terms of the percentage of voters that we've had voting in this election by about, you know, maybe 1.5%. So it's not significant, but it's a little hard to tell how much it's affected that. And this one won't be the big test. The big test will be after '22, when all the vote by mail goes away and has to be restarted.
Follow-up.
Follow-up.
Just for a point of clarity, so I currently have a ballot sitting in my house.
Please send it.
For my vote by mail. And so it's probably too late to send it, right?
I wouldn't, yeah, I wouldn't drop it by mail now. That would concern me.
So I am going to be in Tallahassee on Tuesday. My question is, if I, sometimes I'm last minute, on Sunday, if I don't vote early, and I have that ballot, the drop box is going to not be open right at?
The drop box at early voting sites is open during all the early voting hours. So from 10:00 to 7:00 on Sunday, we will have drop boxes at every early voting site that are open. We are also going to have our main office, we're going to have that drop box open this weekend as well.
Okay. Last follow-up. So at 7:01 on Sunday, if I miss that, I better not go to Tallahassee Monday. I should just stay here and vote Tuesday?
Well, you can come on Monday and bring us your vote by mail to our office, so you can still get there to Tallahassee.
Thank you.
Or you can call me, and I'll come pick it up.
Got it.
That'd be a tough example. Representative Roth?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Supervisor Link, for the great job you're doing. I hear nothing but good things. I do hear that you've done a great job of trying to remove voters from the rolls that have not voted in a long period of time. I have a specific question for you that I get asked all the time. Are you able to query your system to be able to terminate all the people that have voted, that have not voted? I think it's, is it eight years that you're, you remove them if they have not voted in eight years? Do you have the ability to query the system and print out a list of people to remove?
We do have that ability to query the system, but the way that our list maintenance process works, we actually, it's triggered by a change of address or undeliverable mail. So it's not just how long they haven't voted. So it's a, if we have noticed that they have moved either through the National Change of Address forms, or if we have received undeliverable mail from that voter, that's what triggers our list maintenance process. So it's not just how long they haven't voted, but whether they did that, then we send them some statutory forms during, after we receive that undeliverable mail or notice of the change of address. Then depending upon how they respond, or if they respond, and whether or not there's a forwarding address, there's different procedures that are followed. Once we don't hear from them after any of those mailings, then they are put on inactive status for two general election cycles. And after, if they have not voted or contacted our office in any way, after they're inactive for two general election cycles, then they are, it's not technically removed, but it's made permanently inactive.
Follow-up.
Thank you. That's an excellent answer, and I appreciate that. A similar question. Palm Beach County is famous for having snowbirds, and we, people that live in two states, and obviously, sometimes they're out of state when they need to vote. Can you explain the procedure for how you're able to mail absentee ballots out to people that are out of state? Are they allowed, are you allowed to send it to any address they request, or just specified addresses, or what?
So when they register to vote with us, they have to give us a residential address so that we know that they are, in fact, Palm Beach County residents. But once we have that residential address, and we're able to verify that, and when I say verify it, I don't go look to see that they're living there, but I know that it is, in fact, a residential address, a valid residential address. Once we've done that, they can then tell us any mailing address that they want. So we do have some people who know they'll be on cruises, and they tell us to send it to a certain area. We, of course, do have a number of people who are out of the county for five or six months, and so they will give us mailing addresses. So we can send it to a PO box or to a mailing address that they've given us officially.
Thank you, Representative. Thank you, Supervisor. Senator Polsky?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm working on a special elections bill to try to cure the problems that have occurred with the setting of the dates. So I look forward to talking to you about that draft. In the meantime, can you tell all of us some of the problems you've encountered with the dates that were set for the special election, and why they're so far off from when we found out about this need?
Well, the way the special elections work is, of course, once there is a vacancy, it is the governor's office who will set the special election. And we are ministerial in that we carry out that election. So we're not able to, you know, move forward or set that election without the governor's call or his order. We did coordinate with Broward County to come up with some proposed dates for the governor's consideration that were earlier, and for whatever reasons, they decided not to move forward with those. As it came time for these, we've been working very closely with the governor's office in the last couple of days, because we in Broward both have elections currently, and one of the proposed dates, which would have been a little bit later, was going to be very difficult to accommodate because there would have been a lot of voter confusion, given that we would have municipal elections, potentially runoff elections, and another House District election all at the same time. So our concern was voter confusion related to vote closing dates, last dates to request vote by mail, when early voting was, for which group. And so we worked with them, and they were very accommodating in the end to agree that it could be on the same date as our municipal election, since us and Broward have the same dates. And it helped move that up a little bit.
Members, I just want to remind you, we are on a tight schedule here. Want to recognize Representative Hardy, who just arrived. If we could, brief question, brief answer, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Two quick questions. Where do your list maintenance protocols come from with respect to how you're required, or when you're required to move someone to inactive status, and from there, if they're dropped from the rolls, is that statutory, or is that in-house? And secondly, what does inactive status mean practically for a voter who may have sat out several elections over several years, but wants to exercise their right to vote in an election coming up if they're on inactive status? Thank you.
Sure. It is statutory in terms of the process that we follow. So that is a statutory process that we have to follow very closely. The only, I guess, discretion that we have is we're required statutorily to do this in the odd year, so at least once every other year. And our office does that more frequently. We're on a, at least three times a year, we go through this just so that it's not so many all at one time. And we, of course, there are all statutes that we have to follow where it can't be within 90 days in an election and things like that. So I would say we do it more often than required, just to keep those rolls clean. And in terms of what it means practically, if a voter is inactive status, they are still eligible to vote. So when we do mailings, they get mailed to inactive voters. When we do new registration cards, those are mailed to inactive voters, and they are eligible to vote.
Thank you, Supervisor. I know that we are in good hands with you, and we thank you for your service and the great job you did on the election.
Thank you.
In the past. And we're sorry to hear of your loss.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming today. And we move to the Clerk of the Circuit Court, Joseph Abruzzo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is so good to see so many friends and longtime colleagues this morning. On behalf of our office's 650 employees, thank you for hearing our concerns and helping to pass several provisions that will make significant progress towards addressing funding issues for clerks throughout Florida. And, Mr. Chairman, a special thank you to you, who, in your role on the committee, I wouldn't have gotten done without you, point blank. Senate Bill 838 was passed and signed into law, authorizing clerks to maintain responsible statewide reserves, carrying forward certain revenues from year to year to promote payment plans to help more people pay their obligations to reduce driver license suspensions. I think that's very important. Second, you all provided a one-year allocation of 6.25 million in emergency funds to clerks for court pandemic recovery plan to assist with the backlog of cases due to the pandemic. When I took office, we had, we still do, as you asked some questions, quite a bit of backlog. About a few weeks ago, we were, I think Chief Judge just had 60,000 cases. But I will tell you, our circuit, the 15th Judicial, we have the lowest amount of backlog for the way that we have been working our office and the Chief Judge, more than the lowest amount compared to every other large county in our entire state. Throughout the pandemic, our office demonstrated its essential role in the community, providing critical services that you can't get anywhere else. Throughout COVID, we remained open for people to file petitions of injunctions in domestic violence cases, or file Baker Act or Marchman Act petitions. We saw high demand for marriage licenses as we would expect during COVID. The legislation you approved last year, well, that's been widely reported, that for a variety of reasons, marriages throughout our nation shadow. The legislation you approved last year created a framework for a long-term approach to fix system that funded clerks. Today, I'm asking, and I'll get right to it, Mr. Chairman, that you support Senate Bill 552 by Senator Boyd, and House Bill 397 by Representative Clemens, which addresses clerks' priorities for 2022. And I will be brief. I will skip a lot of it, because, again, the time. But providing funding options is Senate Bill 552 by establishing a process for clerks to submit quarterly requests for reimbursements from the state for non-fee services for mental health and substance abuse cases. I'll, if you look, and again, in interest of time, I do have handouts that you are provided that go through the bills and why they are essential.
Thank you, and I'll encourage all members to reach out to the clerk for, you know, with questions and follow up on those documents. But continue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say this. I know many of you serve on Appropriations Committee. We are, of course, the Clerk of the Courts, but our other side is the Comptroller, the CFO of the county, if you will. Inflation is real. We, our office manages billions of dollars. When you start looking at the national debt going into the trillions, possibly over 30 trillion, this is a real scenario that I know Speaker Designate Renner and I were talking about on Ways and Means going back four years ago. So I just ask you to be cognizant, and it's not hyperbole. We're seeing it in our numbers, and inflation is real.
Thank you. Any questions? None. We thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, delegation. Appreciate it.
Dorothy Jacks, our Palm Beach County Property Appraiser.
Good morning. Rounding out your constitutional officers today. My pleasure to be with you. First, a quick word of thanks for passage last year of two bills, one which allowed us to give some dispensation to homeowners who are elevating their properties to avoid flood damage from future sea level rise issues. That's an excellent bill that will be actually a constitutional amendment on the ballot next year. The other bill that also passed with the support of Senator Polsky was an allowance for us to renew senior exemptions automatically, which just saves the 15,000 seniors in Palm Beach County and hundreds of thousands across the state from having to go through filling out forms, remembering to return them, and so forth and so on. So a big thanks to Senator Polsky for her help with that. That benefited a lot of people here in Palm Beach County. I do have two issues for 2022 that I want to bring to your attention. One is a longtime thing we've been trying for, which is an increase in the widow widowers' benefit. At the moment, if you are a widow widower in Palm Beach County and you file, you get a $500 reduction in your value. That's not taxes, that's value. It equals about $8 on your tax bill. It's been that way since it was put in place some 40 years ago, and we'd like to raise it from 500 to 5,000. That would give every widow widower a reasonable amount of return, which would probably be around $80. It depends on the county and so forth, the city. But this is going to come before you this year. We have good support for it, and I really encourage you to consider adopting it. It is not a huge impact to local governments' collections, and I can give you those specifics in Palm Beach County. The other bill, very quickly, Representative Roth is working with Palm Beach Atlantic University locally, but obviously, this bill would affect universities statewide who lease property from private entities for 99 years or more, allowing the university to receive a tax exemption on that property. Right now, Palm Beach Atlantic is in this exact situation, pays a substantial tax bill on a piece of land that they lease from a private entity, a 99-year lease, in fact, with a 99-year extension. So effectively, they own the land. with a 99-year extension. So effectively, they own the land, but because of the law, they continue to pay property taxes on it. We'd like to just correct that for them and all other private universities around the state. I can certainly tell you more about that at any time. I will be in Tallahassee in January. I'd love to come by and see most of you, talk about anything else that's bubbling up at the time. As always, our office is very happy to help you with data. If you're interested in anything from what properties are worth, how many people live where, that sort of thing, we have a lot of that sort of data and always happy to help. So feel free to reach out, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak for a few minutes. Nice to see you all.
Thank you. I don't see any questions. Okay, we have four local bills here this morning. Each member and their staff have received the documents in advance for review. These proposed local bills will be presented, discussed, and will be taken up for a vote. Following the presentation from each local bill presenter, we will allow for public comment from those in the audience who wish to speak to the bill being presented and offer remarks prior to the final vote on the local bill. Due to our full agenda, and in order to allow everyone to speak, you will have up to two minutes to provide public comments on a local bill. We will hold you to the two minutes. Please see Kristy Fernley. Right there. Okay, she moved. To fill out a public comment form to speak on any of these local bills presented. According to our rules, local bills are passed with a majority vote of House members present and a majority vote of Senate members present. At this time, you may make a motion to table the, let's see, let's see, we will get to that in a minute. So we will recognize, the chair recognizes Representative Rick Roth to present local bill, Town of Lake Clark Shores.
Thank you, Chairman. Members, as you recall, the Town of Lake Clark Shores submitted a local bill in both 2020 and 2021 to annex an enclave-type area of unincorporated Palm Beach County that is within the boundaries of Lake Clark Shores. Going forward, this local bill today will focus upon eliminating the enclave rather than annexation of this enclave-type area. The bill does declare that this unincorporated area of Palm Beach County within the Lake Clark Shores to be an enclave. I believe the area we're talking about meets the practical definition of an enclave. If the western border of both the town and the near enclave, Florida Mango Road, were a local road, the unincorporated area would be an enclave, and this bill would not be necessary. Since Florida Mango Road is a county road, this area is not an enclave. Again, simply put, this local bill declares this unincorporated area within the town to be an enclave for the purposes of Lake Clark Shores. If passed, and this is very important, if passed, the Town of Lake Clark Shores and the Palm Beach County, Palm Beach County government would have to agree on any future plans for annexation. To be clear again, this bill does not annex this unincorporated area within the boundaries of Lake Clark Shores. Chair, that's the bill.
Thank you. Hearing the bill, members, do you have any questions for the presenter? Great. There being no questions. Any comment from the public? You have two minutes.
Good morning, and thank you, Chair. Mayor Paul Chalhoub, Town of Lake Clark Shores. I just want to thank the delegation and thank Representative Roth for this. If y'all are able to support our local bill, it would mean a lot to our municipality. We've been trying to address this issue for many years now, and it certainly would allow us an opportunity to move forward with our plans for additional infrastructure improvements. And thank you very much for your consideration.
Any other public comment? There being no other public comment. Do I have a motion to approve this local bill?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? It is moved and seconded that the delegation approve this local bill. Is there any member debate? There being no debate, members, we will, having no more public comment or debate, the question is on adoption of the motion.
Chair, can I just ask who made the motion and who did the second, please?
It was Representative Willhite and Representative Silvers, I believe, or Hardy.
Thank you.
So Executive Director, Vicki, would you call the roll, please?
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Hardy.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Silvers.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Slossberg.
Yes.
Representative Willhite.
Yes.
Having received votes in favor by a majority of the House members present, majority of the Senate members present, the motion is approved. Congratulations. Okay, now, the chair recognizes Representative David Silvers to present the local bill for West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to recognize Bonnie Jensen to present the West Palm Beach Police Fund local bill.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm here on behalf of the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund. I am joined by the West Palm Beach FOP leadership, Adam Myers, Dustin Campbell, and Jim Sniffin. This amendment is a result of a collective bargaining agreement between the City of West Palm Beach and the FOP. The collective bargaining agreement was recently negotiated, and it resulted in two specific changes to the pension plan. One is that there's a restoration of the 3% multiplier for police officers who were employed on October 1st of 2011. Their multiplier was reduced for a period of time between 2011 and 2017. This would restore that benefit to the 3% level that it is currently. The restoration does not apply to those members who have retired prior to the passage of this bill or who have entered into the drop. The change costs about $322,000, which will be paid by the City of West Palm Beach as a part of their contribution in the next fiscal year, which is October 1st of 2022. This change decreases the funded percentage by less than 1%. You should know that the City of West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund is funded at 96% currently, and that is before we recognize what we anticipate to be between 18% and 22% return for this fiscal year. The second change is ministerial. We're updating the name of the collective bargaining unit or the collective bargaining agreement that's contained within the special act to change it to the FOP. And then finally, since the special act is being amended, the board has recommended that a clarification be added to some leave that's transferred into the pension plan to limit it only to those who are retired in accordance with the direction we've received from our tax council. And that's all I have for you, unless you have any questions.
Members, do we have any questions? Senator Harrell.
Thank you. I just have one question. The fiscal on this is only to the city. There's no fiscal to the state.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Representative Willhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Jensen, what was the multiplier for those years that it wasn't 3%?
2.68. Their multiplier was tied to changes in the assumed rate of return, and so the fund was reducing the assumed rate of return based on advice from their consultants. And so it had an impact on the members. So this restores that multiplier back to 3%.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Senator Pell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And when you say assumed rate of return, you also said that you're expecting an 18% to 20%
We are.
...rate of return this year. What does that do to this overall?
So overall, the pension fund has been reducing their assumed rate of return. They started at 8.25 many, many years ago. They are down to 7.25 currently and are considering reductions going forward.
Thank you. Any other questions? There being no questions, any public comment? There being no public comment and no questions. Do I have a motion to approve this local bill?
Some of.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Having a first and a motion and a second, is there any member debate?
Mr. Chair.
Representative Willhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Representative Silvers, for bringing this forward. You know, the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund has been funded 98% for years. I think it's an example of how collective bargaining units and municipalities are working together on this, and this is a great example, and I appreciate the opportunity to support this local bill again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any further debate? There being no debate and no further public comment, the question is on adoption of the motion. Executive Director, would you call the roll?
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Chairman Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Hardy.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Silvers.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Slossberg.
Yes.
Representative Willhite.
Yes.
Thank you. Having received votes in favor by a majority of the House members present, majority of the Senate members present, the motion is approved.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you. We move forward to the third local bill, which is the Village of Loxahatchee by Representative Rick Roth. I'd like to make a motion to table the Village of Loxahatchee local bill until the December 8th hearing.
Second.
I have a second. Okay, is there any, any questions by members? No questions by members? Any public comment?
Just for clarification, can you restate that? You mentioned Loxahatchee, the village. That's the Indian Trails? Has it's written in the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Clarification.
Okay, then I'll restate my motion that we table the Village of Loxahatchee local bill discussion, which is, I believe, what I said originally. So I think, I think we're good.
Chair, I have a comment. If we're ready to move, before we move on to a vote, I'd like to make a comment.
I'll let you do that in debate after the public comment. Sure. No further public comment? There being no further public comment. Representative Roth, you are recognized.
Yes, I mentioned this to several of the members of the delegation prior to the meeting, starting, this is obviously a controversial issue. It's been in the news a lot lately. We've been working very hard with the citizens of the unincorporated area. A lot of great things have taken place, a lot of controversy too. There is, we are going to postpone the bill with this vote until December the 8th, which allows everybody to more fully understand what the potential problems are with the bill as currently, which was currently going to be voted on. We're now tabling the bill with the idea that there's going to be a change, and we want to make sure there's plenty of time, two months, not two months, but the bottom line is, we're not, I did not want to bring amended bill forward today and surprise everybody. I just felt like that was just unfair and unreasonable. Everybody needs to know what's going on. Everybody needs to understand what the bill will do, and therefore, we're postponing it until December the 8th. Give everybody a chance to understand and to talk about it, call my office, whatever. So I think that we're doing this, this is a very good process. We're trying to move the process forward, and I think this is the right way to do it. Thank you.
Any other debate? Representative Willhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Representative Roth. Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you and the Executive Director, in conjunction with any of the municipalities or interested parties and the county, also do our best to communicate the process, the status, or make sure that everybody is notified if the issue will be coming up and what it is, and make sure they have the information before they come here. I would just make sure that communication is well done, because this is a big interest of the area. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Just to comment on that, you know, this was worked through right till the last minute, and in the last minute, we decided that just had some issues still left to resolve, and so we had to pull it, and as we have done now. So, but we will make sure communication is very clear.
Thank you.
Chair, I'm sorry. Can I make one more quick comment? Just 10 seconds. I just want to thank the chair for his leadership on this. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you. We always have 10 seconds for that. Having no further public comment or debate, the question is on adoption of the motion. Executive Director, would you please call the roll?
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Representative Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Hardy.
Yes.
Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Silvers.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Slossberg.
Yes.
Representative Willhite.
Yes.
Thank you. Having received votes in favor by a majority of the House members present, a majority of the Senate members present, the motion is approved. Moving on to our last local bill, Town of Loxahatchee Groves, Representative Willhite, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and not to be confused with the closely named last local bill we were just talking about, but the Town of Loxahatchee Groves, if you look at the map in your backup, is probably 99% agricultural residential. It is a community of hard-working people that have a lot of equestrian activities, farming activities, and so they have the same interest as the bill I passed last year for the Village of Wellington to put some minor restrictions on the use of fireworks in their town. And so they are asking for the same thing, again, the same protections. We know that the equestrian industry, farming, and aspects of our county are so very important, and so anything we can continue to do to protect them will continue to help them thrive and to support Palm Beach County. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call Mary McNicholas or the mayor of the Town of Loxahatchee Groves to explain more of their position on this local bill request.
Ms. McNicholas, you are recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, honorable delegation. I'm Mary McNicholas with Jeffrey B. Sluggan Associates, representing the Town of Loxahatchee Groves. With us, we have our mayor, Robert Shore, who's joining me at the podium, and we also have Jamie Tickham, who is recognized earlier, our town manager. This bill is basically going to create a partial exemption, as Representative Willhite said, to the provisions of the statutes that have been in place. The difference is that, in essence, the designated holidays of New Year's Day, New Year's Eve, and also Independence Day are the three days that we are preempted by the newly adopted section 791.008. Those are the dates that the Town of Loxahatchee Groves would like to provide some regulations on, minor regulations. We are following in the footsteps of our sister city to the south, Village of Wellington, and we appreciate so much their help as far as the legal and the forethought that they've gone through this. We appreciate Representative Willhite for his specific and brief conversation. It is a rural equestrian village or town that's about 12.5 miles, square miles. So we know that this is an industry that we need to protect. We need to protect our equestrian residents as well as the animals. If there's any questions, we'd appreciate entertaining them at this time. Otherwise, we'd appreciate your support.
Thank you. And did you care to say anything, Mayor?
Yeah, I apologize for that last comment. My agenda said Indian Trails. I had printed a previous one that was sent to me. So I looked at Jamie's and he said Village of Loxahatchee.
You know, I referred to Loxahatchee Groves as Loxahatchee Graves earlier. So we're now, we're now even. So mine was on a Halloween theme, so.
My bad for not getting to the latest agenda. But thank you very much, Representative Willhite, for moving forward with this. And every year, our residents, a lot of our residents are putting pressure on us to put signs out, do everything we can as a town to inform people of the impact that fireworks has on, and not just the equestrians, but all animals. In our town, the animals far, far, far outnumber the residents, probably 10 to 1. I'm just making that up, but it's probably close. So just thank you all for your time, your service, and we appreciate you. your service, and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Mayor. If we could, members, any questions? Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Briefly describe the effects of fireworks on, on a horse.
When a firework goes off and a horse either sees the flash or hears the boom, they don't know what it is. Horses are animals of habit, and they have their routines, they have their environment that they're used to, and when there's a drastic change in that environment, they, they get scared. They react. I have horses, we lock them up in the stalls during events like this to try to minimize the chance of them hurting themselves, and that's what they do. They get scared, they run, and they just eventually run into something or twist something, and when a horse has damage to their legs, it's a very, very serious situation, so...
Over the past five years, how many horses have been put down because of fireworks?
I do not know that answer, sir.
Okay. But there have been.
I could imagine several.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to public comment.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? There being no questions, no public comment. Members, debate? No debate. We will move, Executive Director, would you call the roll?
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes. Point of order, you need a motion and a second.
Oh, thank you. That would work. Oh, yes. Do I have a motion on the bill? A second?
Second.
Thank you. There being a motion and a second.
Thank you.
And now debate. Any debate? No debate. Executive Director, would you call the roll?
Senator Berman.
Yes.
Senator Harrell.
Yes.
Senator Polsky.
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Yes.
Chairman Caruso.
Yes.
Representative Hardy. He just left the room. Representative Roth.
Yes.
Representative Silvers.
Yes.
Representative Skidmore.
Yes.
Representative Slossberg.
Yes.
Representative Willhite.
Yes.
Thank you. Having received votes in favor by majority of the House members present, majority of the Senate members present, the motion is approved. Now, we're going to move on to the presenters section of our agenda. We have twenty-seven presenters, plus public comment after that. It is ten fifteen. Our presenters alone are going to take us to eleven fifteen, and then we have public comments. So, presenters, I ask you to, to stick to the two-minute, there's a clock down there. Please, please guide your, your, your comments accordingly to the time allowed. First up will be Mary McNicholas, again, with the FWC collaborative presentation on Corbett Levy project.
Good morning, delegation, again. I'm Mary McNicholas, and I'm representing Indian Trail Improvement District. We are requesting your full support, urging Governor DeSantis and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Secretary to fully fund, finally fully fund, the Corbett Levy project that's been incomplete for almost a decade, especially after Tropical Storm Isaac flooded the western communities in two thousand twelve. The state did fund four million dollars of the eight million requested, and South Florida Water Management District built half the levy in two thousand fifteen, leading to the phrase, "Half the levy is no levy at all." Now, now we're taking a collaborative approach, team approach, and we have Drew Bartlett and Carolina Moran with South Florida Water Management District, Dr. Time Reinert with Florida Fish and Wildlife Commission, Burgess Hansen, and our Board President, Betty Argu, here with ITID, Palm Beach County, Todd Von Laren, and Jeremy McBryan. Not all of us are going to speak. I'm here with Jeff Sluggatt and this extraordinary team to request your full support for your chair's signature on a letter urging our governor and the Secretary of DEP for the same. Here you are, Drew.
Thank you, Senators. Representatives, a pleasure for me to be here and good to see you all. It's rare that you have a project that is win-win-win. It sounds like a BERM, but really, it is to rehydrate the Corbett Wildlife Management Area, and it fits right within our resiliency plan, because when you deal with resiliency, you've got to match your natural areas with your human areas. And this is a natural area that needs more water, and we can put it in with a new BERM. Water in the natural area keeps it out of our flood control system, keeps it out of Lake Worth Lagoon harmfully, so it's win-win-win for everybody, and so it's easy for all of us to rally around a project like this. We've submitted it, and usually, I'm here asking you for a hundred million dollars. This time, I'm asking DEP for nine million dollars. It's exciting for me to have a nine million dollar project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Representative Roth, with a quick question.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair. Seems like I'm having a good day, huh? This bill, I mean, this appropriation that we're talking about for the Corbett Wildlife Area of BERM was on my agenda when I first got elected. This is absolutely the perfect poster child of government ineptitude, especially when Governor Scott was so adamant about repairing the dike. That was breached with Tropical Storm Isaac with eighteen inches of rain in one day in two thousand twelve. So I do have a question, Chair, thank you. What other sources of matching funds are going to be available to help this nine million dollar cost?
So there are more sources of funds. The, right now, the district is bringing, we are going to build it. It's not our levy, but we're going to build it, we're going to maintain it, so we're bringing all the O and M and legwork towards building it. ITID has funds they're bringing through a FEMA grant, five hundred thousand. Right now, there's discussion with Palm Beach County on the ability for the county to bring funds. So right now, we're looking to DEP for about eight million of it from, from the resiliency program.
Thank you.
Additionally, just, just to add, I'm sorry. Additionally, there is five hundred thousand that was from a previous legislative request that has not been swept, and South Florida Water Management and Carolina did find in their budget, and it is designated as, in their budget now, free and clear for this project. Also, on the potentially, the two million dollars from Palm Beach County, that is coming up this Tuesday, I believe, on their regular agenda, and we certainly would appreciate if we could get like a letter or support from this delegation urging that as well, and I'll be happy to provide that to Vicki with your, with your approval.
Chair, can I make a...
Would you like to...
Yes, sir. I'd like to make a motion of, I don't know how to do this exactly, but I'd like to have some discussion, but I'll make a motion that we do pin a letter to the Palm Beach County Board of Commissioners to, in, in favor of them, if they are going to do two million dollars for the Corbett Wildlife Area levy, to be a partner with the South Florida Water Management District and this, and, and all the other parties.
Okay. Representative Willhite.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I, I second the motion, giving you direction and signing a letter on behalf of us to support this appropriation project moving forward.
Let's go to voice vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Thank you very much.
Motion passes. So you will get that letter. Okay, thank you. Well, moving on to Lauren May, Advocacy Director for Step Up for Students.
Good morning. I'm Rhonda Dry with Step Up for Students for Lauren May.
Before we get started, Ms. May, Catherine Wallace, Thomas Lanahan, and Cynthia Archbold, you're on deck.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm Rhonda Dry. I'm standing in for Lauren May this morning with Step Up for Students, and we brought a family to talk about their scholarship story.
Good morning. My name is Norbert Stinfel, and I am living in Greenacres. I would like to explain how a Florida Education Choice Scholarship has helped my immigrant family resettle in America. We came from Haiti to seek refuge from persecution, leaving everything behind to come to a country we didn't know in search of a better life. The Family Empowerment Scholarship has been a huge miracle and a financial blessing for my children, because it has allowed to, to attend Catholic school and receive the kind of education I receive growing up. Nolan is in first grade at Sacred Heart School. Chloe is an eighth grader, and Jade is in tenth grade at Cardinal Newman High School. We love this school because they go beyond strong academics. They also are very invested in their families. They go the extra mile to help us, and they do it with so much passion and joy. My children love the schools and our thriving and this environment. As a person who has a master in education and has been in every level of education back in my home country, I know the value of a good education and the cost. We would have never been able to afford this opportunity for our children, for the scholarship.
Thank you.
The Family Empowerment Scholarship has been extremely important in helping us make the transition to our new home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for providing us with...
Glad your children are doing so well.
Thank you.
Any questions, members? No questions. My glasses.
Thank you.
There we go. We move on to Catherine Wallace, Regional Director, Florida Death with Dignity.
Good morning, honorable delegates. The Florida Death with Dignity Organization is providing information to legislators about an end-of-life option called aid in dying. It, it also refer, is referred to as medical aid in dying. This is a legal medical standard of care in ten states and Washington, DC. It's designed to provide physicians with guidelines for prescribing medication to terminally ill, competent patients who may choose to ingest it to end suffering they find unbearable and achieve a peaceful death. The way an individual crosses the threshold to death is profoundly personal and private matter. For some individuals, particularly those who have exercised considerable control and autonomy throughout their lives, choosing a more peaceful death through aid in dying allows them to preserve a sense of coherence across the span of their life. Terminally ill residents with six months or less left to live deserve the right to die, deserve the right to choose how much suffering to endure before death. My husband is a hospice physician in Broward County. He sees good and bad deaths. Here are his thoughts. A terminal illness is an absolute equalizer. It doesn't care about your financial status, zip code, gender, race, age, your religion, or your political affiliation. If you or someone you love is diagnosed with a terminal illness, I hope you live in a state that will allow all end-of-life options so that you may write the final stage in a way that is in step with how you lived your life. In two thousand nineteen, New Jersey Governor Murphy, who was a devout Catholic, signed an aid and dying bill into law. Even though his faith led him to a particular decision for himself, as a public official, he could not deny this end-of-life option to those who may have reached a different conclusion. Please consider sponsoring a Florida aid and dying bill, and I hope that you can look at it the way Governor Murphy did. He showed great compassion without moral judgment. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Very difficult subject. Any questions, members? No questions. We thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Lanahan, Executive Director, the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
Good morning. I am Tom Lanahan, Executive Director of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. I've had an opportunity to meet with all of you individually, but I just wanted to refresh you. We are authorized by state statute, governed by an interlocal agreement among the four counties that comprise our region, which is Indian River, St. Lucie, Martin, and Palm Beach Counties, to provide coordination and services for our member local governments. We're a platform for sharing ideas, concerns, and best practices. Our current priorities relate to water and wastewater, biosolids management, coral reef disease response, the Central and South Florida Flood Control Project Sea Level Rise Update Study, our Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Plan, which is in your packet of information. And more recently, we have been making presentations in various places about investment of the American Rescue Plan Act funds in projects of lasting legacy for our county cities as well as the state, and it's something I hope the state will take into account as you work on your budgets for the coming year. We're supported by local dues, grant and program funds, and contracts with local governments for specific tasks. I just wanted to let you know, we are here to help, both in the region and at the state level, and are a resource for you if you have any questions or anything we can do for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you, members. Any questions?
Ran off too fast.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Lanahan. Cynthia Archbold, Communication Director, Floridians for National Popular Vote, League of Women Voters.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, honorable members of our delegation. I am Cynthia Archbold, and I am with Floridians for National Popular Vote. It is a coalition. It consists of the League of Women Voters, Common Cause, Make Every Vote Equal, and the National Popular Vote, Inc. This is a strong movement in Florida. Sixty-eight percent of Floridians would like to see the president elected as the one who wins the most votes in the country, the most total votes in the country. Wouldn't it be great on election night if you went to sleep knowing that the next morning, the winner, the President of the United States, is the candidate who won the most votes totally in the country? So lots of, of your constituents believe this would be a great improvement, and I know that lots of you do too, because we have contacted you and discussed this with you in Zoom meetings in the last few years. Let's face it, the current system is flawed, because the candidate who receives fewer votes can be elected president. We've seen it happen in two thousand sixteen and in two thousand. This is a nonpartisan issue and has been embraced by members of both parties. In fact, this legislation has been passed in fifteen states and the District of Columbia, adding up to a hundred ninety-five electoral votes. We only need seventy more electoral votes for this to become law, and we would like Florida to be adding its thirty electoral votes to this. The good news is, we have bills coming up in the next legislative session in Florida, one introduced by Representative Joseph Geller and the other represented by Senator Victor Torres, that would allow you to be part of this movement and improve the way we elect the president, make every vote equal, and honor the will of the people. So we are asking you to please support House Bill sixty-nine and Senate Bill five eighty-four. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Archbold. Any questions, members? Representative Roth, for a very quick question.
Yes, sir, Chair, I can do that. Yes, ma'am, would you agree with what some people are saying, that by doing this national popular vote, that you are disenfranchising all the people in rural America, because you would be allowing just the population of the major, major cities of the United States to be able to elect a president? So therefore, a candidate would not have to go to states like Montana, Arkansas? You know, you understand my question. Do you agree that this is disenfranchising all those people and destroying the electoral college?
It does not destroy the electoral college. It needs the electoral college. This is state-based legislation, and there's a big misconception about the rural areas of our country being outnumbered by the people living in cities and urban areas. In fact, they are equal. It's about sixty-eight percent in the rural areas that vote Republican, and a common number, a similar number in the urban areas that vote Democrat, and they balance each other out, and the numbers of the population are very similar, so that's a big misconception. And the small states are the ones that really want to pass this legislation, because they're being completely ignored, because of winner-take-all laws.
Any further questions? Thank you. Just wanted to recognize a, the Commissioner from Highland Beach, Peggy Gossett Sideman, back there in the room, if you'd stand up. Nobody claps, but thank you for being here. That's nice. Okay, next up, Michelle Canadae, Circuit Director, Guardian at Lydum.
Good morning. My name's Michelle Canadae. I am the Circuit Director for the Guardian at Lydum for the fifteenth Circuit. As many of you know, the Guardian at Lydum, the Florida law requires that a Guardian at Lydum be appointed to children who are abused, abandoned, neglected, and the Guardian at Lydum program... Lydum program provides that for them. We recruit people in the community, volunteers that go out and visit our children. They're trained by our team, and they work in a multiple disciplinary model with certified CAMs, Child Advocate Managers, and GAL attorneys. The GAL reports recommendations, gives recommendations to the court about best interest for children. And we, as a statewide Guardian at Lydum program, have approximately 10,000 volunteers, 518 here in Palm Beach County, and we represent 1,400 kids in the dependency system. Over the last year, we have represented 2,221 children, and our attorneys have represented best interest in over 11,000 hearings in Palm Beach County. I want to just, we're not really asking for anything this year, but we would ask that you support the legislative, we were asking for 4E funds from the federal government, and that requires that we get legislative approval for trust fund authority so we can bring down those federal dollars. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, members? Quick question from Representative Rick Roth.
Sure.
First, I just want to make a comment, then I have a funny question for you. I just wanted to ask your support. I'm actually doing a foster care, early learning care bill this year. It's not been made publicly, but I hope I can get y'all's support. I love the Guardian at Lydums. I'm a little disappointed that Alan Abramowitz is no longer the governor's guardian at Lydum. He's a good friend of mine, so y'all are doing a great job. My funny question is, are you related to the Supreme Court Justice Charles T. Kennedy?
I am not. I get asked that all the time. I am not. It's not spelled the same either. But we, by the way, we love Alan Abramowitz. He was actually my boss when I worked for DCF as well, so we loved him.
Thank you.
Sad to see him go. But he's with ARC, so we're good.
Any other questions, members? Senator Polsky.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you so much for what you do. It's such an important program. Since we have an audience here, can you tell people how they can sign up to become a guardian at Lydum and how important it is?
Absolutely. I love talking about the Guardian at Lydum program. So, as I said, we do advocate for kids in abuse, abandoned, neglected cases. So, you can go to our website. If you just put in guardian at lydum, Florida, and you'll get the state website, and you just, it'll forward you to Palm Beach County. You can also come visit us. We are in the courthouse, and we do need space, by the way. I saw Chief Judge here. We do need, we're very overwhelmed. We don't have enough space in the courthouse. But it is incredibly rewarding. As a child who was actually in foster care, I never had a guardian at Lydum advocating for me, and transitioning from being a young adult was very difficult. So, please volunteer a time. It's about 10 hours a month worth of time, and we do have extensive trainings on how to become a volunteer. Thank you for asking.
Any other questions, members? Thank you, Ms. Kennedy, and thank you for your service protecting our children in the state of Florida and Palm Beach County, and for all the many, many volunteers out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Matt Collins, Florida gun rights, going to be followed by Nicholas Tishione and Stephanie Killingsworth, Melanie Bone, and Dorian Daggs. Matt Collins. Okay, move on. Nicholas Tishione, Toxicology Unit Manager, Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. This ought to be interesting.
Thank you, Chair, especially for that pronunciation. I appreciate it.
Did I get it right?
I think that's how the Italians would say it. They wouldn't like how I say it.
Okay, then why don't you introduce yourself?
Thank you. I am Nick Tishone. I'm the manager of the Toxicology Lab in Palm Beach County, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak with you today about important bills that Senator Berman and Rep. Casello, both from this delegation, are sponsoring regarding supplementing the definition of drug-impaired driving according to Florida law. They are Senate Bill 436 and House Bill 271. Drug-impaired driving is a growing problem nationwide, and Florida is no exception. Based on a study by NHTSA, 51% of seriously or fatally injured drivers were positive for an impairing substance other than alcohol. NHTSA states on their Drug Impaired Driving webpage that it's illegal everywhere in America to drive under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, opioids, methamphetamines, or any potentially impairing drug prescribed or over the counter. Did you know that Florida is one of only six states where that statement is not true? Currently in Florida, the impaired driving law, Florida State Statute 316.193, requires that for someone to be guilty of driving under the influence, or DUI, by drugs, that drug must be an inhalant or specified in Chapter 893. The result is that in Florida, a person can be driving impaired due to a drug, but not be guilty of the crime of impaired driving if that drug is not on one of the lists. The bills would expand the definition of DUI by adding the language or any other impairing substance or any combination thereof. This will provide for a more rational definition of drug-impaired driving, close a loophole in our drug-impaired driving law, and bring us in agreement with the NHTSA statement and the law in 44 states, the District of Columbia, and Puerto Rico. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, members. Any questions?
Yes.
Senator Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you really quickly, you said 44 other states have done this, or any other impairing, you said substance?
Substance, yes, sir.
Can you explain that just a little bit clearer for me?
So, part of the bill does define what an impairing substance is, and it borrows language from another section of statute 316, where it defines it as being a substance that can impair the many normal activities of daily life, basically ability to walk, talk, speak, drive a car. So, it would have to be a substance that has been demonstrated to show that sort of impairment. So, it's similar to what toxicologists like myself do now. We would have to go into court and have research and support. This drug that we identified can cause impairment, and then, you know, the jury can decide, was there evidence of that impairment?
Follow-up, Senator Powell?
No, thank you.
Could you give an example?
Sure. So, examples would be some designer drugs that are very popular in this day and age, things that are made to be similar to other drugs that are, for example, prescriptions, benzodiazepines like Xanax. There are designer ones now that are not prescription medications that are even more sedating, that are not included in state statute, that can significantly impair someone. Things like fluaprazolam, I don't know if you remember that, but it's drugs that are designed to mimic the effects of current prescriptions.
Okay. Any other questions? No other questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. Tishone. Move on to Stephanie Killingsworth, University of Florida Thompson Earth Systems Institute Scientist in every, scientist in every Florida school.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the delegation. I'm representing the University of Florida's Scientist in Every Florida School program. It's great to be back before you again this year. My name is Stephanie Killingsworth. I'm a biologist. I'm a former middle school science teacher at Coniston Middle here in Palm Beach County. I actually live and work here in West Palm Beach for the University of Florida's Thompson Earth Systems Institute and the Scientist in Every Florida School program. We're a free program currently funded by UF that helps teachers include working scientists into their classrooms and curriculum so that students can experience authentic and applied science. As a quick refresher, program components consist of virtual and physical classroom visits by Florida scientists that represent an array of scientific fields, universities, agencies, and industry. Virtual classroom livestream programming is another supplemental material that we provide with extension activities that align to Florida's learning standards, and we also provide unparalleled professional development and research experiences for teachers that allow them to work side by side with scientists, learning about the research that's currently happening in our state. As you'll see in the folders, we are in our third year currently, and I am proud to say that the program has been growing by word of mouth. In our first year, we completed statewide 183 visits to classrooms. Last year, we completed over 1,800 visits virtually statewide, reaching over 55,000 students. And again, as year three progresses, we're seeing that number grow exponentially. These visits include 60% of the counties in Florida, and Palm Beach County, I'm proud to say, has been a flagship county for this program. We've reached 50% of the schools here in our county. So, what I'm here today for, to tell you today is, I want to continue to positively impact the STEM teachers and students here in our county. So, my asks are that you help me disseminate this information to all important stakeholders, inform your colleagues in the legislature, and I would like to seek support legislatively to sustain our program. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
Thank you. Senator Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I missed it, but where did you get your funding from right now?
Currently, we're funded 100% through the University of Florida.
Thank you.
And we will continue to get support from them as well.
Senator Harrell.
Thank you. Senator Berman had my question, but I would say, go Gators.
Go Gators. Thank you so much.
Have a great day.
Thank you for your work, and biologists and scientists in our classrooms. I'm certain it increases the child-teacher interactions that we so much encourage. So, thank you. Next up, Melanie Bone, Dr. Melanie Bone, FACOG. Don't know what that means, but Morse Life Health System Medical Cannabis Team.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Dr. Melanie Bone. The FACOG is that I'm a Fellow of the American College of OB-GYN and spent 30 years practicing obstetrics and gynecology in this county. About five years ago, I opened a medical cannabis practice. In my private practice, I treat men, women, and children, but I serve as the Director of the Medical Cannabis Program at Morse Life, where we treat over 65 and mostly over 85-year-old patients for their ailments. We are proposing some changes to the marijuana legislation in the upcoming session, and let's start with telehealth. During the time of COVID, we found telehealth to be very helpful for this population and the disabled, and now that that's been taken away, the problem is the patients can't come for their visits. And even yesterday, I had a 90-year-old call crying. She couldn't get her appointment. She was afraid to take an Uber. She didn't want to sit in a waiting room, and she asked, why can we not go back to doing telemedicine? We just want cannabis to be on par with other medicines that you can certainly do by telemedicine. And I might add, if you put cannabis on par with some of the medications that are out there, it's far safer. You cannot die of an overdose of cannabis, but you can die of an overdose of things like Xanax, Valium, sleeping pills, and pain medication. In addition, we'd like to expand the qualifying conditions in the state of Florida to include the most common reason we use cannabis in the elderly, namely chronic pain, arthritis, and sleep disorders. But at this time, they're not included in the law. In addition, at Morse, we have the luxury of having a change of caregivers to allow more than one person to care for a patient who's in a study program. But we'd like to extend that legislation to all elderly, no matter where they reside. Thank you so much for your time. Any questions?
Thank you, doctor. Questions, members? Senator Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Bone. Do you have someone who's bringing the legislation this year?
Yes, so we're working with a number of people. We'll be up in Tallahassee on the 16th to have more meetings. There's a bill by Senator Diaz to expand telemedicine, but it doesn't include this, and we'd like to see that happen. There's also Representative Williamson who's doing a bill, and we're trying to get in front of elder care and some other committees to see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Doctor, I just wanted to ask you a question. Can, do, do you now prescribe medical marijuana for, I guess, migraine headaches?
Oh, so actually migraine is another one of the ailments on the list that we're hoping to add. In order for us to do that, we have to send a letter to the state with documentation about efficacy and medical studies. We can do it, but it would be much better if it were on the list. It has been shown to be very helpful for those patients.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up.
Can I ask her a question?
You can offline, step out.
Could you, could you step out and ask her? Appreciate that. Or save it for public comment later?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, she's leaving.
Yeah, but you're welcome, Nick. Go ask her a question.
She's, she's waiting for you. She's waiting for you.
Yes. Next up, Dorian Daggs, Advocacy Chair, Children's Home Society, Palm Beach Region.
Good morning, members. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Dorian Daggs. On behalf of all of us at Children's Home Society of Florida, thank you for your public service. With all the challenges before our state, your unwavering commitment is the leadership we need, and we stand ready to assist you and your staff. We are proud to support children and families so we can help build safe, strong foundations within our community. Our Bridges Program helps families with children eight and younger find the resources and support they need to achieve personal and family success. We provide mental health counseling services and support to teens through a variety of programs. We also bring families together through our adoption services and post-adoption support. Through these programs and others, we are changing lives and creating better futures. As a leader in serving children and families, CHS is a founding partner, along with the University of Central Florida, of an innovative model called Community Partnership Schools. Through Community Partnership Schools, we've seen improved attendance and reading levels, better classroom behavior, an increase in graduation rates, and higher levels of teacher retention. We've also seen more youth enroll in college. Community Partnership Schools work with established partners to provide a long-term commitment to eliminating barriers to learning, leading to opportunities for successful futures. Today, there are 26 such schools throughout Florida, but none in Palm Beach County. We are requesting additional funds to expand this proven model, and we believe it would be great to start a Community Partnership School here in Palm Beach County. We look forward to working with each of you. Thank you for your time and your enthusiasm in serving our state. Please call upon me and the CHS team if you need additional information. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Daggs? None. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service. Next up, Melody McDonald with Florida Medical Rights Association, followed by Marcia Schepler, Deborah Drum, and Marina Bartow. You recognize.
Hi, thank you for having me speak today. I appreciate the opportunity. In November of 2017, my father died as a victim of medical negligence in a hospital. Since it was only three days after my mother died, his life was deemed worthless, and I was not allowed to hold anyone accountable because of Statute 768.21 Subsection 8. This law precludes a certain class of people from having any accountability held for them, that is, anyone unmarried over the age of 25 with no minor children. So, there are four bills on the table this year to repeal that. The first two are to repeal it on behalf of an adult child, as if, you know, perhaps you have a person who would never get married, such as someone who's autistic, as an example. House Bill 6011 and Senate Bill 262 would repeal that portion of that law to protect those individuals, to protect the appearance of, there are two other bills, House Bill 6039 and Senate Bill 560. This is a pro-life issue. The idea that some lives matter less than the root, than of the rest of the other people is the root of all evil in America today. That is a big problem, and when it comes to the value of human life, we cannot negotiate accountability. Please consider supporting or even co-sponsoring one or more of these bills. I know some of you have been on board with that in the past. We've been trying for many years to get something through. In effect of that, the grassroots movement that I started has grown dramatically. We have presence all over the state, and we'll be in Tallahassee to speak with each and every one of you. The opposition has an awful lot of lies to tell you about why this can't be changed, why healthcare would go up, and I encourage you to please revisit that section in your packets where I've outlined why those things are not true. And, and thank you so much for your, for your time today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any questions? Representative Slossberg.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. My question is, how many other states, do you know how many other states have this type of law on the books?
Zero.
Yeah. And, and thank you for bringing this. I know in the House, we did pass legislation that did pass off the House floor. It didn't really move through the Senate, so looking forward to seeing this legislation get through maybe in both chambers.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, one of the problems is the Senate wouldn't hear it last term. We hope that it's going to be different this time.
Thank you.
Representative Roth. Real quick question.
I want to make a comment. I'm more than happy to obviously review these bills and ask to be a co-sponsor. This is a personal issue for me. I lost my, one of my sisters a couple of years ago. She was single and had no, no children, and therefore... She was single and had no, no children, and therefore there was an issue of criminal negligence, and we were not able to bring lawsuits. So, thank you very much for this effort.
Thank you. I'd, I'd be happy to reach out to your office to provide additional information if that would be helpful.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And no other questions? I have a question. Who's the Senate sponsor and the House sponsor?
The Senate sponsor for both bills is Anna Maria Rodriguez. The House sponsor for the one to repeal for the children is Spencer Roach. And the House sponsor for the one to repeal for adults is House Representative Hinson.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Marcia Schepler, Justice for JoJo.
Thank you, members of the delegation, for allowing me to speak to you today. It's Marcia Schepler, and I live in Stewart. In 2019, I took my son, JoJo, who had Down Syndrome and autism, for emergency services at Cleveland Clinic at Tradition Hospital, and he refused treatment. By the time I got him to a different hospital, he was in septic shock and passed away. He was 29 years young. Medicare conducted an internal investigation and found against the hospital, citing Cleveland Clinic with the highest and most severe sanction of imminent jeopardy, meaning that delay that night led to JoJo's death. Adding insult to injury, the Florida Free Kill Law, the 768.21, protects the hospital rather than JoJo. But here's the catch: Florida's free kill law represents a complete disconnect from the reality of parents with special needs adult children in Florida. JoJo was adjudicated by a Florida judge under the State Guarding Advocate laws to be unable to marry, unable to engage in a complex relationships, and he was unable to have children. Florida child support laws allow courts to order parents of adult children with disabilities to provide indefinite financial support. Florida criminal law states that parents neglecting the needs of their forever children are guilty of committing a felony. Permanently disabled adult children are allowed to be claimed by parents in as exemption in child tax credit, no matter their age. Florida's definition of an adult child is nebulous at best and at worst completely discriminatory if it relates to the free kill law individual, and individuals with special needs. Parents of adult children with developmental disabilities do not celebrate child milestones like new cars, voting rights, or financial freedom. We celebrate toilet training, simply having good days, and hugs and kisses. Our responsibility, love, and every kind of support does not magically end at age 18 or 25, our adult children or our forever children. Florida has statutes written specifically to protect people with developmental disabilities. It still requires medical malpractice lawsuits to be filed under the same statute as typically developing adults who have completely different life choices and opportunities. You should have those handles, lift those revisions. If you as legislators are truly committed to protecting the adults most, Florida's most vulnerable citizens, start repertaining them legally. Choose a revision and support the bill, or choose to support new bills HB 6011, HB 6039, and their Senate companion bills to eliminate the free kill law. Because what happened to JoJo, my forever child, should never happen to anyone.
Thank you, Ms. Schepler. Any, any questions, members?
Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Drum, Vice Chair, Loxahatchee River Preservation Initiative.
Hi, good morning, Chairman Caruso and delegation members. As their Vice Chair, I'm here representing the Loxahatchee River Preservation Initiative, which is a multi-agency partnership, including state agencies, county government, local municipalities, and public stakeholders, focused on turning dirt to complete projects that directly benefit the water and environmental resources in the Loxahatchee River and watershed. We have a 21-year successful relationship with the Florida Legislature in completing these projects, totaling almost $46 million, all of which was minimally 50/50 cost shared with local entities. This year, we are respectfully requesting $2.27 million in state legislative funding, which will be overmatched, to complete nine important projects that have been technically vetted and ranked by the LRPI. You have a handout in your notebooks, looks like this, detailing the projects and the types of water quality and habitat improvement projects that are the focus of this effort. In addition, there's another local initiative focused on the Lake Worth Lagoon with a similar project detail sheet in your packet that looks like this one. It's the blue one. The Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative's appropriations request this year is for $3.6 million, which will also be overmatched, to complete six projects that will directly improve water quality and environmental conditions in Lake Worth Lagoon. With little time and much to say, I will boil it down to this. The word "lifeblood" is defined as the indispensable factor or influence that gives something its strength and vitality. It is not an overstatement to say that water is the lifeblood of our beautiful state, and Palm Beach County is doing its part to protect this essential resource. Without clean and sufficient water, other critical components of our state's economy cannot exist: agriculture, tourism, business development, livable and desirable communities that support growth. All of these depend on clean and sufficient amounts of water. The efforts and appropriations requests that I have presented today deliver on clean water. Thank you for your consideration and support.
Thank you. Questions, members? No questions? Okay, we'll move on. Oh, I have a question for you. Ms. Drum, any, are any of the proceeds of $2.7 million allocated for studies?
No, sir. These are turn-dirt projects.
Great. Thank you. Next up, Marina Bartow, Surface 71, Inc. You have the floor.
Hi, I'm Claudia Kirk-Barto, her mother, because she and the other students that are involved with Surface 71 are in school today, and like their bank account, I have to serve as the treasurer because they can't open a bank account because they're not old enough. So I will be speaking on their behalf today. The students Emily Bersano, Gemma Curry, and Marina Bartow created Surface 71 to raise awareness about the environmental impact of plastic pollution by engaging young people to take action by keeping our cities and oceans clean. But it really started with Emily and Gemma in middle school with the teacher that you saw just moments ago, Stephanie Killingsworth, because it was an IB project at school. Surface 71 then was awarded in 2018 by a philanthropy tank, $12,000, and is now a 501(c)(3). So far, the group has made immense strides by installing water refill stations in local schools, about 11 to date, recovered trash from local beaches, and created artwork from that, and then education and advocacy. They are now federally funded by Youth Serve America, and I don't have that much time, so you have this paraphernalia in your package, and just look up surface71.org and get more involved because they have a bunch of events coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Then don't go anywhere. Any questions, members? Well, we want to thank the, the kids for getting involved. Plastic is a huge problem in our, in our waters and, and land throughout, and we need to do something about it. It's great to see the kids get involved and to see the interaction between Stephanie Killingsworth and, and Surface 71 and the cause and effect. So, perfect.
Thank you, and I'm sure they'll be getting involved with the Loxahatchee River project as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, that's Pam Wiener, Florida State Guardianship Association.
It's Weiner, believe it or not.
Weiner. You know, I was 50/50 there, taking a shot.
Thank you.
You know, it was graves, groves, you know. They got it. They're still, they're still with us. You have the floor.
Thank you, addressing you as a board member of the Florida State Guardianship Association. Guardians take seriously our duty and responsibility to keep the person under guardianship healthy and safe while maximizing his or her dignity, autonomy, self-determination, and assets. Florida statutes require guardians to allow the person under guardianship to maintain contact with family and friends unless the guardian believes that such contact may cause harm, typically based on past behavior. There are many ways to maintain familial contact, even if there is a concern. Our best practice is to get permission from the court prior to restricting the person's communications with a family member or friend. Recent sensational stories might lead one to believe that competent people are declared incompetent. Florida has one of the most due process-oriented guardianship processes in the country that requires a three-person committee to examine the alleged incapacitated or AIP person and report to the court its findings. The AIP is provided legal representation during the guardianship and the incapacity hearings. It is possible for a person to be determined incapacitated, have a guardian appointed who arranges appropriate treatment, and then regains capacity. In this situation, the guardian is obligated to petition for restoration of the person's rights, or the person under guardianship can petition himself or herself. We favor supportive decision-making advocated by the disability community when appropriate, though we often serve clients for whom that process would be onerous or perhaps impossible. In addition to searching for advanced directives to avoid guardianship, the court always considers whether a family member should be appointed. Sometimes family mediation is recommended prior to appointment, and we support this. Family members may decline appointment because of oversight, reporting requirements, or intra-family dynamics. Professional guardians work and are on call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Almost all of us have pro bono clients who are unable to remunerate us for our time. Our profession has a code of ethics, standards, and best practices, and there are avenues for making complaints and initiating investigations. According to Anthony Palmieri, the clerks who investigate detect 13% of complaints are valid, and the majority of those are not egregious. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiner. Questions, members? Representative Silvers.
Thank you, Chair. Really quick, Pam Weiner. Could we please speak after you're done? Because I have a, an issue that was a constituent that I need to talk to you about.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? I think the, the late, the latest Britney Spears debacle has brought a lot of attention and light to the guardianship program that's, that are through our country, and thank you for what you do in Florida.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. Next up, Rich Bartholomew, League of Women Voters of Palm Beach County.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Redistricting events have moved forward with the activation and the operation of the legislature's committees on which some of you serve, but the legislative leadership will be making the key decisions. We have a few comments. First, the process is much too limited in terms of public access. Holding meetings at the Capitol without dedicated public hearings is a cause for great concern. It gives the impression of a closed or even a secret process. Our county league joins our state league in insisting that the legislature open up the process and take wide public hearing testimony, at least on an electronic basis. We're not asking for a roadshow. Video hearings can do most of what's needed. Without broad public input, the legislature's maps, their work, will once again suffer in the court of public opinion. This is a 10-year decision that will decide who we can vote with and who we can vote for, and we know that this is very personal to each of you. The legislature's public mapping tool also has big problems. There's no way to factor in data on partisanship, which is the first major constitutional criteria upon which the maps must be made. We believe that it's a very difficult tool to use, and it's really not practical in terms of what's happening. Our league is calling attention to redistricting with community presentations around the county. We're also holding a media spotlight event on November 4th. We hope that you will be able to work with the leaders to open up the line drawing process, especially through electronic means, and we'll be happy to listen to anything you would like to tell us, and we've given you information on how to contact us about the subject of redistricting and what we're doing in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions, members? Representative Skidmore, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much, Mr. Bartholomew. So, those issues have been raised a number of times in, on the House side of our committees, and we, some of us feel very strongly that technology would lend itself to having those types of meetings, and, and we're pushing for that and not getting a lot of, of response. But is it your opinion and the opinion of the League of Women Voters that electronic meetings would serve as the access point for the public?
Absolutely. I mean, clearly, we've all been using electronic means. This is the first in-person meeting I've been to in a couple of years. Zoom, web, there's all sorts of possibilities. It can clearly do the job without requiring a lot of time and logistics.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for, for your answer. And my, my second question is, in terms of the website, for someone who, you know, may have been working and using it for a number of years, it seems very easy in our committees. You know, the, the staff are kind of moving and zipping all around. Do you and your, and the League of Women Voters members find it cumbersome and difficult? And do you have confidence that the public input section of the website is going to be viewed in earnest by any of the committees?
No, and in fact, I believe it's off-putting because if you want to make a comment, first, the machinery wants us to admit to, we don't know who, anybody who we've been spoke, speaking to about this issue. This, I would characterize this as a poison pill for a lot of people. This is not something, it's an inappropriate question to ask, and frankly, I think it's designed to reduce public input.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair?
You're recognized.
Thank you. Thank you for your response. Have you had to travel to Tallahassee from South Florida before, and do you, are you familiar with the challenges that the public have in getting to a committee in Tallahassee? And is that one of the conditions that worry you about that lax access to public input?
Precisely. I have done that. I've been, been involved in the, the time and the expense that's involved. It's frankly, as you, we've already said, it's unnecessary with all of us having a lot of experience now with electronic access. It's just, it's a barrier that makes some people suspicious about why this is being operated as kind of a closed Tallahassee activity. This is not good for the legislative institution. We, we've come to rely on you. We know that you work together in the bipartisan way you're doing today. This is the way to do business with lots of public access and public hearings. This process on which so much depends for you and for us needs to be more open, more democratic, and less off-putting.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Thank you.
I, I just had one. Are, were you indicating that those meetings in Tallahassee, those committee meetings, are, are closed to the public?
What, what they're doing is they're, they're having committee meetings that are, as we've been able to observe it, mostly about informing the committee members about what's happening, but there aren't regular public hearings. In the last go-round on redistricting, hearings were held all over the state. Physical public hearings like this were done everywhere. Now, it can be done electronically, but what's happening is you're having committee meetings with very limited public input. The league is fortunate in that our president goes to Tallahassee and tries to engage the committee and tries to work particularly with the chairs. But as you and we know, this is essentially a leadership activity, and we know that advocacy on this issue has to be done between you and the leadership, and we respect that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bartholomew. And we're gonna, we have to move on. We're running out of time here. Next up, again, Claudia Bartow. And this is actual Claudia.
This is me. Claudia Kirk-Barto, good morning again. Junior Achievement of the Palm Beaches and Treasure Coast. It's really simple. Junior achievement is preparing Florida's workforce, and we need everyone's help. Employers agree that our nation's graduates are not prepared for the 21st century skills to succeed in the workplace. 50% of high school dropouts say they left because they didn't think they were learning things that mattered to them and to their future. Simply put, we're not empowering our kids to be more successful than the generations that came before them. We know that junior achievement can be a big part of that solution to these problems. We've a proven success and track record, and we need to expand. At junior achievement, we believe education from kindergarten through 12th grade should be built on a bridge of engagement between the classroom and the community. Together with our educational partners, we're making learning relevant to every student's future by infusing authenticity, business connectivity, and real role models every day. We're teaching kids about financial literacy, work readiness, and entrepreneurship, and reaching more than 8 million kids worldwide and about 60,000 locally, thanks to recently Google Sites and transition- Google Sites and transitioning to the virtual world. Our newest initiative is Transforming Education. It's called 3DE, and we're in our third year at Lake Worth High School, and will launch in the fall at Dwyer High School, and it's really infusing, the students are learning through the lens of business, with case partners locally like Safe Harbor, RebaVich, JP Morgan, and national partners like Arby's and Home Depot. So, we've been doing this since 1981. I did give you more paraphernalia in your packets that you're more than welcome to review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I think you all know where to find me, but we cover Palm Beach up through Indian River County and out to Hendry.
Thank you. Any questions from the members? No, thank you so much.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Next up, Dan Pellwitz, Solid Waste Authority, followed by Linda Smythe and Austin Phillips.
Good morning. My name is Dan Pellwitz. I'm the Executive Director of the Solid Waste Authority of Palm Beach County. I'm here today to call your attention to SB 366 and HB 81 that, among other things, would change the definition of biomass or renewable energy to exclude solid waste from those definitions. As the state considers moving forward toward using all renewable energy, which is the intent of these bills, we ask, simply ask that you ensure that solid waste remains in the definition. We appreciate the opportunity to have met with Senator Berman a week or so ago, who was the sponsor of this, and we also appreciate your support over the years of the Solid Waste Authority. We have invested more than $1 billion in waste-to-energy facilities in Palm Beach County, and it demonstrated over 30 years that waste-to-energy is a solution to solid waste management and to sustainability and not a problem. We proudly operate the cleanest and greenest waste-to-energy plant in North America here in Palm Beach County. Waste-to-energy facilities are recognized by the EPA, the UN, and others as net greenhouse gas reducers. They do this because they produce electricity without using fossil fuels. They avoid the methane generation that would alternately be emitted from landfills, which is 30 times more potent a greenhouse gas than CO2, and they also recover, in our case, nearly 50,000 tons a year of metals that would otherwise have to be produced through virgin ores and the environmental impacts of that as well. In short, excluding solid waste from these definitions would mean that the electricity generated by our waste-to-energy facilities and the other eight in the state would no longer be considered renewable energy, and as the goal of this, of this legislation is to produce 100% of Florida's energy through renewables by 2040, this could threaten the viability and existence of waste-to-energy in the future, increase our reliance on landfills, and ultimately increase, not reduce, greenhouse gas emissions in the state. We simply ask for your support in ensuring that waste, that solid waste continues to remain in the definition. Thank you.
Thank you. Question from Senator Berman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for, for meeting with me, and I know that the Solid Waste Authority does an amazing job, and we both are working toward the same goal of 100% renewable energy, and if and when the bill is heard, we will amend this provision.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I appreciate your time.
Any other questions? Ask Senator Powell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pellwitz, can you tell me what is the significance of this bill being proposed? Why is this bill proposed, and the importance of this amendment that Senator Berman would run in terms of, we talked about waste-to-energy, and you kind of hit broad-scale the idea that the energy created by our facility here, which went online not too long ago, a couple of years ago, right?
Yeah, we have one facility went online in 1989. It was refurbished in 2009. That continues to operate. The second one came online in 2015, yes.
Okay, so, and that creates enough electricity, electricity to power that facility, but why is this bill being proposed by the legislature? What's the own impetus behind it? Do you know?
Well, I mean, my understanding of the bill is the intent is that Florida would become 100%, would generate, would use 100% renewable energy by 2040. That's the goal. The issue we have with it solely as the Solid Waste Authority is that we have a major investment, a billion dollars invested in waste-to-energy plants, and the financial viability of those plants relies on the ability to sell electricity to offset the costs that would otherwise be borne by our ratepayers. So, we generate next year approximately $40 million in electric revenue from the sale of electricity. That revenue, if it no longer existed, would threaten the viability of waste-to-energy from a financial standpoint, make it too expensive. And it's important to note, the Solid Waste Authority's waste-to-energy facilities have extended the life of our landfill in this county from what, it would have been depleted probably around 2005, 2006. Our current projection is 2054. So, waste energy in combination with recycling is a major benefit and a major critical infrastructure to the state of Florida, and with our high water tables and the water issues we have, doing anything that encourages landfilling over recovering resources that would otherwise be entombed in a landfill, it doesn't make sense environmentally, and that's simply one of the issues, that's the issue we're bringing up here, is that, is that simple change in the definition, it contraindicates the purpose of, of the legislation itself, because it would actually increase landfilling and reduce waste-to-energy in the state.
Thank you. So, the follow-up is, so, this language does not purposely, maybe not purposely exclude solid waste, or, but this would add to that language? And just to reiterate the point, so, previously, prior to me graduating from planning school back in 2006, I know I looked at the comp plan, and our landfill had a level of service that would have, I guess would have ended around 2005, but this has allowed for the opportunity to extend to 2054. And when you start talking about that and sustainability with this idea that waste-to-energy, does it even extend further than that once we start looking at how much of an impact this really does have?
Well, I think the one issue I want to bring up that leads me into our next step is our next step is the recovery of aggregate from ash from, from these waste-to-energy plants. There's about 200,000 tons of aggregate that exists in the, in the ash stream coming out of the back end of the facility. In Europe, it's widely used in road construction, asphalt and concrete production, and we have just worked, we've been working with the University of Florida and the FDOT and the DEP, and we have received approval to use aggregate from our facilities in asphalt and concrete for road construction. And so, our next big investment's going to be in a facility that recovers the fine metals out of that ash stream and also recovers that, that aggregate so that it can then be used in road construction in lieu of virgin materials or other recycled materials, which is, again, another sustainability feature of these plants. Our purpose is simply to contribute to the circular economy, to take whatever resources are in that waste and reuse them and put them back into commerce so that we don't have to use virgin materials, so we don't have to mine them, and so we don't have to produce it from other, other virgin materials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Roth?
Thank you, Chair Polsky. Yes, sir. Mr. Pellwitz, we met out at the Solid Waste Authority a couple of years ago. I'd love to do that again. Obviously, you're doing a magnificent job. I actually ran a bill, I think I ran a bill a couple of years ago you didn't like, actually, but, but I did learn from that process, and so my, I do have a couple of questions. Number one, what is the major, the, the major sources of waste that you're, that you're using for waste-to-energy? Is it biomass?
No, it is, it is residential, is residential, commercial, garbage, and vegetation, and biomass. So, the majority of the waste-to-energy of the facility is, is considered biogenic. It is biomass in nature, but the minority of it is also commercial products that have been produced and that people buy every day, and they dispose of it every day. And so, what a waste-to-energy facility does is it takes the energy that's been embedded into those products used to produce them, recovers it, and puts it back out onto the grid so that it's not lost in a landfill, and we also recover the metals that would otherwise be lost in a landfill. And as I've said, and soon we'll be recovering the aggregate that can then be reused, so the amount of waste coming out of that facility that ultimately leads to be landfilled is going to be dramatically reduced.
Follow-up, Chair?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, my other question is just general in, in nature. My understanding is that, that obviously certain things are profitable to recycle, like aluminum, but other things like plastic are really causing, or, you know, some financial challenges. Could you kind of explain that a little bit? The idea that you, you know, contamination, is that the major, is that one of the problems? That we got to get citizens to do a better job of separating materials? What, what is your challenges specifically to plastic?
Sure. Most, a lot of the plastics, plastics 1 and 2, you look on the bottom of the bottle, and they've got a 1 and a 2. Those are highly marketable. We make good money on plastic. We've been recently making more on the sale of plastic than on the sale of aluminum on a per-ton basis, which is very rare. The real issue we have with contamination is, is we rely on the public when they put the material in their bins to make sure that it's clean. Don't put plastic bags in there because they get wrapped around the machinery at the recycling plant and cause all kinds of problems. And, and try to just focus on what we include in our program, and you can go to our website, and you can see that, it's on our website, what, what to recycle and what not to recycle. That's one of the issues that, you know, if we can't move the material, it's not recycled. So, when you put the material in your bin, you're not actually recycling at that point. The recycling occurs after it comes to us. It gets sorted into grades, it gets, it gets, it gets packaged for market, it gets shipped to market, and it's reused in products that we use every day. And so, our role is to try and determine what the markets can take, what materials can be recovered and be moved into, into commerce, and, and to focus on doing that. And that's what we do every day. And I'd just like to summarize, if there aren't any more questions, with basically inviting you all out to come see our facility. I think Victoria Nolan is, is trying to schedule a tour for December, and we would encourage everyone, whether you've been to our facility or not, to come out and, and see what we do and how we do it. And, and again, I appreciate it, and I just want to finalize by saying, I don't believe it's the intent of this legislation to undermine waste-to-energy. I just think it's, it's an inadvertent definition change that, that has that, that impact. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, good. He gave me, okay. A point of personal privilege, please bring your own bags to the store, right? That's really where it starts with the consumer, especially because Sierra Club is coming up next. And don't put the pizza boxes in the paper, right? Because the grease ruins all the paper.
Absolutely, and thank you for that.
Yeah, I see it all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will hand back the gavel.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And just, yeah, I, I think, you know, Solid Waste Authority, we, we need, as a consumer, as a public, we need to know more about what we can put in those bins and what we can't put in those bins. So, I hope you, you know, get the word out there through, through marketing means, and let us all know to help, help you do what you do best. Thank you. And next up is Linda Smythe of the Sierra Club, and, and before you get started, I want to thank you for the, the water bottles we have here today. They're not full, and, and so we're drinking out of what you're trying to avoid, plastic bottles, and, but they will get recycled, and, but we-
Reused. Don't recycle them.
Reused.
Give it to that guy.
That's right, that's right.
Don't put it in the landfill.
Well, no, the Sierra water bottles get reused, and I encourage all of the members here today to take their water bottles and, and use them, you know, wherever you go during the day, to reduce, let's, let's all try a day to save at least, and not use one water bottle. Each. We'd make a big difference in the world.
Thank you.
So, you have the floor.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Linda Smith, and I'm here representing over 32,000 Sierra Club members in the state of Florida. I have passed out a letter and two copies of the Sierra Club Florida Chapter Top Priorities for the Legislation. Please use one copy for your reference and share the second copy with your staff, and I hope you will refer to these priorities often during the legislative session. The overarching theme during this year must be the slowing of climate change. Climate change is a function of the past and the future, and you can change, you can't change the past. I am asking you to please change the future. We must reduce our use of fossil fuels. The collective "we" cannot mitigate our way out of this crisis. Mitigation is a short-term Band-Aid. It distracts and reduces the time and money that should be spent on the solution. I have installed solar on my roof, purchased an electric vehicle, and purchased renewable energy credits. I feel I am doing what I can do to help mitigate climate change for my family, for my neighbors, but it's going to affect our children and grandchildren. It's a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage. And most of what I can do is unaffordable for the average citizens and businesses in Palm Beach County. We all know we must cut greenhouse gas emissions. Please incentivize and expand opportunities, as discussed by some other speakers. I donate to the Nature Conservancy. Why? Because they purchase land to preserve. I can't afford to purchase large parcels of land to create preserves. I wish I could, but the Nature Conservancy can, and so can Florida forever. If it is properly funded and managed, so please support Florida forever. Also, consider increasing fundings for the Rural and Family Lands Protection Program. We must protect our remaining undeveloped lands. You have my contact information. I hope you will reuse your bottles and enjoy them. It's a shameless plug to reduce plastics, and you have my contact information. Let me know what I can do to help you on any of your environmental endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you, members. Any questions? Senator Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually filed a bill, and my staff will know the number of it, and it's for, about safe water, and I'd appreciate if the Sierra Club look into the bill and, and look into whether they can support this bill also. Thank you.
Representative Rick Roth with a quick question.
Oh, yes, ma'am. And Ms. Smythe, thank you so much for the presentation. I would appreciate your support. I am running a, a solar panel bill. It's HB 259, to make it more, make it easier to get permits to, to build, to put a solar panel on your residential house. Secondly, I am doing appropriations and bills on Florida Forever, Rural and Family Lands Conservation, Rural and Family Lands Protection Plan, so I would appreciate your support on that, working with me on that. But I do have a question for you. I was looking over your Florida Chapter information. As a farmer, I just will say that carbon dioxide is not the big problem that everybody says it is. It is a problem. We do need to deal with it. We do need to mitigate it. We do need to figure out a way to burn less coal, more natural gas, but specifically, does the Florida Chapter support nuclear power? Because it does not generate any CO2.
The Sierra Club's official opinion on that is they do not support solar because there isn't a good way-
Nuclear, nuclear.
Um, sorry. They absolutely support solar. They don't support the nuclear because of the situation with the nuclear waste.
I do want you to know, follow-up, Chair?
You're recognized.
I just want to make one comment, and I appreciate that so much, but I, I just want you to know that, that does hurt your argument, because we're going to die in 10 years because of CO2 and climate change, and the temperature's going to go up five more degrees, when it's really five degrees maybe by 21, 100, not 10 years. It does hurt your argument if you don't embrace nuclear power. Thank you very much.
Can I-
Yes, ma'am.
-that? The permitting and et cetera that has to go on with nuclear power plants, you'd be about there anyway, and we are standing is we need to do it in a more renewable and environmentally safe way, and you can get a lot of that through energy efficiencies. If we didn't have to make plastic bottles, we wouldn't have to burn as much fossil fuels. Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Thank you, Ms. Smythe, for all the work the Sierra Club does to keeping our world clean. And Austin Phillips, for Austin Phillips.
I'm actually with Equality Florida, and I have two people with me that weren't on the list with me.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you want, we filled out paperwork for them. Not sure if you wanted them to speak with me or at the end.
We are pressed for time, Mr. Phillips. They, if they will speak in lieu of speaking with public comments, then yes, they may come right after you.
Oh, right after me as well?
Yes.
Okay.
If it's a related subject.
It is related. It's different parts of it, but it is related.
Please continue.
Okay. My name is Austin Phillips. As you know, I'm with Equality Florida. I'm here to talk about the, the trans sports ban Senate Bill 1028. I am going off of my personal experience in high school and middle school. I am currently 25 years old, and I am a transgender man, and in school, I was not out, and I was very timid, very scared, and didn't really know what I was doing. And I feel like this ban really limits what we already have limited to ourselves. I was, I grew up as a trans, as a tomboy, so I, you know, loved all things typically masculine, all sports and stuff like that, but when I went to school, it was directed, it was, it was constructed. Everybody was supposed to do a certain thing a certain way, and I really feel like people need to- And I really feel like people need to worry about the kids growing up in a secure environment to be able to express themselves at the way that they feel like they need to, instead of having people tell them and delegate what gender expression they should do. I just, I don't really know exactly what we can do for the professional sports, because I'm not in that, but all I can go base off of my childhood and how I feel like this ban really just causes more of an internal struggle with these kids that are already struggling with things internally that a lot of people don't understand. I missed out on a lot of things in my childhood because of my anxiety and my depression, and I feel, like I said, that if I had more of an opportunity to express the sports and the hobbies that I enjoyed, instead of listening to what other people said I should do, my childhood would probably have been a lot better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And you have.
Yeah, I have.
We're going to save questions. I'm going to save questions till all of you speak. So I, is it? Aya?
Aya.
Thank you. Aya, I can't read the writing, so.
Okay, everyone gets it wrong.
Introduce yourself.
Hello, Representatives and Senators. My name is Aya Lobo, and I'm currently enrolled in Palm Beach County, Florida as a high school student, meaning that the bills you pass for transgender youth directly affect me and many of my friends. So I'm here today to speak for them and for all the other kids out there who identify as transgender and they fight for equality and to be treated as a normal human being. A University of Kansas study found that in students' grades nine through 12, 97% of student athletes graduated high school, 10% higher than those students who had never participated in the sports. It was even found that those who played team sports in high school are 15% more likely to attend college. So why should we cut off these benefits to transgender youth? No matter what they identify, at the end of the day, I am the future. When DeSantis was asked what message he was trying to send when he signed this bill on the first day of Pride Month, the yearly month where I get to celebrate being unapologetically me, he said, "It is not a message to anything other than we are going to protect fairness in women's sports." Well, I will let you know, DeSantis, that I play competitive women's soccer. My state, or my team even winning the Florida State Championship last year. I will let you know, if a girl came on my team who was male at birth, I would welcome them on my team with open arms. If I played against a girl who is male at birth, I would play them just as any other team, because at the end of the day, this is just a game. Continuing on, my next point is on the transgender youth medical bans, to which use the youth of Equality Florida, which I speak for, this legislation has nothing to do with the health and safety of children. It's coming from the same anti-LGBTQ playbook the youth are creating and passing the same sports ban I was talking about just a minute ago. This bill coming in the worst time possible as of last year, over 44 transgender or non-binary people were violently killed. 44 human beings should be trying to live their life. To go even further with the reason against these bills, a recent study on LGBTQ mental health by the Trevor Project found nearly all LGBTQ youth have reported their mental health being negatively impacted by the increase in anti-LGBTQ bills, and where the path of transgender and non-binary youth have seriously considered attempting suicide. This is 2020, a year progression. So I am the future, and this is going to be your first time hearing someone who these bills negatively impact personally. Please consider that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kibo. And Kayden Smith, next.
Good morning. My name is Kayden.
Speak loudly, please. Closer to the microphone.
Good morning. My name is Kayden Smith. I'm a constituent of Representative Slossberg, and I'm here to talk today about the trans youth medical care ban, and I'm asking you to oppose this bill. The trans youth medical care ban, if passed, would criminalize doctors who provide best-practice medical care to trans youth and would prevent youth from feeling secure in their own bodies. Gender-affirming medical care includes the use of puberty blockers and hormone replacement therapy to promote physical development that is consistent with the child's gender identity, which is their internal sense of who they are. The, this ban goes against leading national health organizations such as the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Psychological Association. Access to pubertal suppression, which is the hormone blocker, or puberty blockers, is associated with lower odds of lifetime suicidal ideation among trans individuals. Efforts to support trans youth in living according to their internal sense of gender is associated with better mental health and feelings of safety at school. In other states that have passed similar legislation, families are traveling to other states, even moving, so that their kids have access to best-practice medical care. And many families don't even have the opportunity or the access to do that, and kids are suffering as a result. In the past year, more than half of transgender and non-binary youth have seriously considered attempting suicide, more than half. Something needs to be done, and it is up to us to make Florida a safer, affirming place for trans youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions? Senator Polsky, please.
Thank you, all the three of you, for having the strength to come up here and speak to us. I know it's a little intimidating, and I really appreciate that you spoke so honestly. I want you all to know that many of us support you in everything, and the ban on trans athletes was a travesty that was passed, and we fought it tooth and nail as hard as we could, and it absolutely should not have been passed. The way we talk about mental health, especially teenage mental health, is very hypocritical because this is exactly the opposite of what we should be trying to do in this state. So just know that, I know it's hard, but we support you, and we love you, and we thank you for speaking today.
Representative Skidmore, did I see a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator Polsky said what I, the comments I was going to make.
Okay. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I was going to say thank you for those kind words. It's very intimidating to come up here, so thank you very much.
Terry Rizzo, Palm Beach County Democratic Party. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Senators and Representatives. It's great to see you live and in person to be here, and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak and to thank you for your service to Palm Beach County on all of our behalf. I'm Terry Rizzo, and I'm here to speak about voting issues and legislation related to voting. And this isn't partisan. It isn't Democratic. It's not Republicans. It's not no party. It's something that affects all citizens of the state of Florida and the foundation of our democracy. And I wanted to address specifically two issues, two items, one of which has already been addressed very eloquently by Mr. Bartholomew from the League of Women Voters, and that is the issue of fair districts. And excuse me for my hoarse voice this morning. As we all know, fair districts are critical to the state of Florida. Every decade, new district lines are drawn. These determine the funds for schools, hospitals, and other essential services allocated by our government. Fair districts are essential. It is important that they be drawn accurately, fairly, and with great input from the public as to what is a fair district. We ask, as lawmakers, it's your duty to follow the fair districts provisions of the state constitution to end gerrymandering and have fair districts for all Floridians and have increased input, especially now in this difficult time, from the public. Secondly, voting itself. Regardless of political affiliation, every eligible voter must be able to vote, and their vote must be counted to ensure the integrity of our elections. Unfortunately, this year, Florida joined states across the country in passing legislation that makes it harder to vote, not easier. And this is shameful, actually. We should work to actually increase access to voting. Voting should be easier, not harder. There are things that can make that happen. Number one, automatic voter registration. Number two, repealing the legislation that passed this past year that unnecessarily canceled vote-by-mail requests. Three, accepting all vote-by-mail ballots postmarked on election days. Four, expanding language access at the polls. And five, investing in Florida's democracy, investing in SOEs with state-of-the-art voting equipment in all counties. Thank you. I know that my time is up, so I'll stop here. But in summary, districts must be fairly drawn, and provisions should be implemented to make voting easier, not harder. Thank you for working to make that happen for the citizens of Palm Beach County.
Thank you. Any questions, members? I have one. Could you repeat those five things you just said?
Yes. I would be thrilled to do so. Thank you. First of all, automatic voter registration. People should be registered automatically, you know, and not, and have to opt out instead of having to opt in to register to vote. So automatic voter registration is something that would, and I'd even expand it to have same-day registration, but start with automatic voter registration. Two, repealing legislation passed this past year that unnecessarily cancels vote-by-mail requests. We should continue.
Number three.
To have vote-by-mail requests available and accessible in an expanded way. Three, accepting vote-by-mail ballots postmarked on election day. If they're in, if they're postmarked on election day, they should be accepted.
Got it.
Four, expanding language access at the polls by increasing interpreter availability, particularly Spanish and Haitian Creole.
And number five?
And number five, investing in the supervisors of elections with state-of-the-art voting equipment in all counties.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thanks for coming. Next up, Chuck Ridley, Chair of West Atlantic Development Coalition, community leader of Delray Beach, speaking on behalf of Unify.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. My name is Chuck Ridley. I have the privilege of being the Chair of Unify Palm Beach County. Unify has a very simple mission and purpose. We exist to build power for Black people and Black communities. Today, I'm here to speak about housing for all. Regardless of your race, your zip code, your party affiliation, housing for all is important and critical. Floridians need a renter's bill of rights. The cost of housing is too damn high in this state. And due to the failed pandemic response, this has really led to evictions and a crisis for many. Last session, this body permanently cut affordable housing by half and failed to pass protection for renters. As a result, Unify demands affordable housing for all and local tools to ensure stable and predictable rents by repealing preemption laws. Second, we would like to see a second chance policy. We need evictions expunged so folk are not haunted by evictions for the rest of their lives. It is just important to have that in place, because too many were wrongfully evicted as a result of this pandemic. Third, we need protection and accountability for abusive landlords. Fourth, we need access to courts. We need investment in legal aids and put it into the requirement that tenants must pay the court registry based on whatever the landlord say is due. And lastly, we need to hold developers accountable and require them to build mixed income and affordable housing developments. I will ask any, I will take any questions if any.
Your timing is very good, Mr. Ridley. Senator Bobby Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Ridley, for bringing this important topic to light here. One of the issues that I've seen, of course, and myself and Rep. Will Hite continue to talk about this, the price of housing in Palm Beach County. Average house now, it just went down, y'all, from $500,000 to about $460,000, which is not affordable to most people. As many of you may or may not know, I am a planner, AICP certified urban planner, the only one in the legislature. I'm saying that so that we can get our credits like lawyers get their credits, but anyways.
And you attended Florida A&amp;M.
And I attended Florida A&amp;M. But here's the question, right? For the developers who are doing the right thing and trying to build affordable housing, whether it be, and looking at the 30, 50, and 80% of the area median income, what I have seen through watching some of my council meetings from the municipalities that I represent is that you have these people in the community, we call them bananas, build absolutely nothing near anything near anywhere, or lulus, locally unwanted land uses, who will come out and fight against people being able to, developers being able to build an affordable housing development, even if it's well-managed and well-secured. How do we, as legislators, as advocates, how do we get the message out that just because someone is a teacher, or a firefighter, or a, who works in a grocery store, or a post office worker, someone who works in the community should be able to live in the community?
Correct.
How do we get that message out to people, other than me saying, and hopefully people are picking this up on Channel 20?
So, Senator Powell, I think that message is out. I think my counter would be is how do we get people to give a damn? We know the amount of, the shortfall on housing for service. People make service. It's not a mystery. The question is, is when do we have the courage to address and make sure that every Floridian has quality housing? Now, so then maybe part of the question is that how do we then form a coalition between those kinds of developers who do have a social agenda, legislators like yourselves and advocates like me, to begin to put the pressure where it is applied and do? And then ask, I guess I am partisan because I don't know how to do it, and you do better than ask me that question, how to get that, at least the party that should be promoting affordable and quality housing, to just really get clearance and sync about how we make that happen. Thank you for asking the question. Thank you.
Any other questions, members?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Ridley, we all know that gentrification's a big problem throughout all of our cities, and we need more affordable housing, and appreciate the work you do at Unify, and thanks for coming here today and making your points.
Thank you for having me. My friend.
Next up, Ryan Schiff, Alzheimer's Association.
You missed one.
I missed one. Sorry, Ryan. Give me a second. Mindy Koch with Palm Beach County Democratic Party.
Good morning, Senators and Representatives. My name is Dr. Mindy Koch, and I'm here representing the Democratic Party of Palm Beach County, Florida. Abortions have been documented since biblical times, and they will continue to happen regardless of any laws passed. If you were born before 1973, you have never lived in a world, in an America, where abortion was restricted. But it was once, and too often desperate women died. Abortion is a choice no one wants to make, but sometimes women must make for many and varied reasons. Passing laws restricting abortion will not stop women from terminating their pregnancies, legal or not. Women in Florida need health care, as the COVID crisis has starkly reminded us. When Florida refuses to take the Medicaid expansion, we leave about $62 billion on the table over the next 10 years. 500,000 women in Florida are stranded without health care. In the 2020 legislative session, you passed the expansion of postpartum Medicaid to one year. That means you understand and agree, health care is vitally important even for women. The hard reality is, I know no laws controlling men's bodies. Do you? We hear the words "personal freedom" today, but personal freedom is not just for men. It doesn't just apply to masks and guns. It also does not end at a woman's doorstep. Abortion bills and refusing Medicaid expansion are about control and power. One of the best ways to keep power is making laws about our bodies. Deciding to have an abortion is a difficult decision without an added burden of government interference. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and I urge you to stand firmly against House Bill 167 and for taking Medicaid expansion.
Thank you, Ms. Koch. Any questions, members? Representative Skidmore.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a question, just a comment. Thank you so much, Dr. Koch, for being here today. You know, many of us are fighting that fight, and my mantra in Tallahassee is abortion is health care, abortion is health care, abortion is health care. I appreciate you being here to help deliver that message to this delegation, and as we anticipate heading up to Tallahassee and experiencing some of these invasive bills, look forward to your continued support.
Absolutely, Representative Skidmore. We're always behind you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, members, we're going to move on. We have three more presenters and then three from the. We have three more presenters, and then three from the public that wish to speak, and we have nine minutes before we need to close. So Ryan Schiff from Alzheimer's Association, and I don't mean to be last but not least, okay?
No worries. I appreciate, I'm definitely going to have to adjust this a bit to my height.
Yes. And bend down.
Just a little bit, yeah.
Into the mic.
Thank you. Distinguished members of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation, I am Ryan Schiff from the Alzheimer's Association of Florida. I appreciate the opportunity to address you today. Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in our country and in the state of Florida. Our state resides at the epicenter of the crisis with the second highest prevalence in the country. Just over 580,000 Floridians are living with Alzheimer's disease. Alzheimer's remains the only top 10 leading cause of death for our nation without prevention, viable treatments, or cure. Many of you have personal stories about friends and loved ones with Alzheimer's and dementia, and you realize all too well that there are no good outcomes for people with this disease yet. And to that end, the Alzheimer's Association will continue to advocate for resources and care for those individuals, families, and caregivers impacted by the disease. With your support, we remain relentlessly optimistic as we propose our 2022 legislative priorities. First, we seek to enhance training for staff in our long-term care communities. Direct care workers are the single most important determinant of quality dementia care. These providers help shape the daily lives of individuals with dementia by assisting in all aspects of their physical care. We will work in partnership with the long-term care community, knowing that additional training helps facilities with staff retention, morale, and family satisfaction and confidence. Second, we know patients talk to their primary care providers first when they are, when they have health issues or concerns. That is why we're advocating for legislation that will require the Department of Health to provide materials to health care providers on early detection, early diagnosis, care planning, and brain health. Finally, we ask the legislature to continue supporting the funding of programs that have a proven track record in research, care, and services for those in need. This includes the BrainBust, Ed and Ethel Moore Alzheimer's Disease Research Program, and respite through the Alzheimer's Disease Initiative and community care for the elderly through the Department of Elder Affairs. On behalf of the Alzheimer's Association and the over half a million Floridians living with the disease, their families and the caregiver, caregivers, thank you for having me here today, and we will see you in Tallahassee soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schiff. Any questions, members? Well, we know that Alzheimer's can affect any one of us, and we appreciate your work in that area. I each-year sponsor appropriations to support the research and those fighting Alzheimer's.
Thank you so much. We appreciate the continued support.
Thank you for coming today. Next up, Ronnie Span, 1199 United Healthcare Workers East.
Chairman, Vice Chairman of the Delegates.
With the Union.
My name is Ronnie Span. I live in Palm Beach County. I'm also a health care worker, and I'm also a member of the state's largest health care union, 1199 SEICU. Again, SEIU. My fellow health care workers, exhausted and frustrated after battling the COVID-19 pandemic for almost two years, we are desperately calling for wage equity and other measures to improve staffing levels and patient care at our area hospitals as the public health emergency continues to rage. Experienced care workers, caregivers are worn down from serving on the front lines of the historic health crisis that has overrun hospitals and led to deaths of many more than 55,000 Floridians. So many are departing in unprecedented numbers, which puts even greater pressure on those who remain to provide high-quality patient care. The most experienced and talented caregivers, many of whom contracted COVID-19 at some point during the pandemic, are leaving the profession in highest numbers due to the physical and mental stress of long shifts and weeks. When even one veteran nurse leaves, a vast amount of medical skills and knowledge walks out the door. Hospitals need to attract and especially retain those professionals if they are truly dedicated to delivering the highest quality of care. Many are leaving because of lower pay scales than new employees and substantially less-than-temporary-agency nurses or traveler nurses who facilitate contracts in an attempt to plug staffing shortages. New hire signing bonuses and agency contracts can be three times greater than hourly wage employees who actually stay and go through the pandemic. We need employers and elected officials to act right away and ensure caregivers are paid and protected fairly, and which will ensure quality care for all the patients and for Palm Beach County.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Should we do the motion first?
Senator Berman.
Yeah.
The chair recognizes Senator Polsky for motion.
Thank you, Chair. I make a motion to extend the meeting for 15 minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Span, Span, I'm sorry, Mr. Span. You mentioned about, you know, making sure that the work, I totally agree with you that we have a health care crisis and that we need to address it, and I appreciate you coming here to talk about it. You mentioned about pay, increased pay. Are there any other legislative fixes that you would like us to do this session that will assure that we have the health care workforce that we need?
Retention bonuses, hazard pay would be a start. I mean, we don't have the experience that we need out here. We have new grads coming out, not knowing exactly how to take care of a patient. We need to keep our experience as people.
Thank you.
And there's nothing else, it's bottom line.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions, members? There being none. Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Span. Dr. Gwinis, Gwinisia Collins, Board President, Falk Center for Counseling. How are you today?
I am wonderful, and good morning to you, Chairman Caruso, as well as Vice Chairman Polsky, and the rest of the Palm Beach County Legislative Delegation. My name is Dr. Gwinisia Collins. I am Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Falk Center for Counseling, located in Boca Raton, where we are a 501(c)(3) that is a nonprofit providing mental health counseling services at low cost or no cost to the residents of Palm Beach County, from children to seniors for the past 50 years. I would like to make a special thank you, or heartfelt thank you, to the delegation for your support of our 2021 appropriations request, specifically Representative Skidmore, Senator Polsky, as well as Representative Caruso. Our appropriations last year was for $150,000 to provide those low-cost, no-cost mental health services for working and economically disadvantaged families across Palm Beach County. The appropriations was included in both the House and the Senate budgets, and it also was included in the final budget by the legislator. Unfortunately, the appropriation was not signed into law. We are recommitting our appropriation this year for $150,000, and again, thank you for the sponsorship of Representative Caruso and Senator Polsky, because the mental health services continues to rise, and the demand for services continues to increase drastically. Approximately 1 in 5 adults in the U.S. experience a mental health illness in a given year, and 1 in 5 youth experience a mental health disorder in their lifetime. More than 90% of children who die by suicide have a mental health disorder, and the impact of the COVID pandemic has drastically increased the need for mental health services for health care workers. The Falk Center for Counseling helps to provide these mental health services. We provide individual couples as well as group counseling services, both in person and telehealth, and we need your support. We encourage you to come and visit the Falk Center for Counseling to learn about how we are helping meet this need, and how your help and support of this appropriation will increase capacity to extend this help to the community. And we also ask for your favor in vote of the appropriations. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. Any questions, members? No questions? We just want to thank you for the work you do for mental health counseling in Boca with the children and, well, everyone.
Yeah.
And could you give your address, please?
Our address is, oh goodness.
I know, it's Boca Ria Road.
It's Boca Ria Road. You're correct. Jonathan, can you help me?
224-55 Boca Ria Road.
224-55 Boca Ria Road, just past the turnpike.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Skidmore's district.
Okay, that's Representative Skidmore's district. That's right. Okay, that ends presenters, and we move on to public comment. Again, those giving public comment have two minutes, and please state your name when you come up. First, I'm going to, why don't you all come up? Jennifer Barazza, Dan Henderson, and Angelique Contreras, and we'll take them in that order. And thank you for waiting the wait to get to this point, all this for two minutes. I totally respect you for that.
Good morning. What killed Ryan, my 30-year-old brother, was damage to the ET tube, the tube that keeps an intubated person breathing. Upon reading his medical records, this was not the first, nor the second, but the third time the ET tube, the most important tube in that hospital room, had been compromised. The worst part is the hospital staff didn't immediately notice nor respond to him not getting oxygen, all this while in the ICU. Since Florida courts have allowed for organized crime to be committed in our health care facilities, this is just one example of the numerous negligent acts that were committed by the hospital staff. According to what is known as Florida Free Kill, a severely harmed patient that survives negligence could be a significant liability, whereas a dead person is not. Let me add that this was an intervention that Ryan refused. He was healthy enough and cognizant enough to refuse. The hospital staff disregarded his health sovereignty, pushed sedatives into his IV, and continued with a medical intervention that has an 86% chance of death. The average hospital bill for 28-day stay on a ventilator is over $900,000. So when the hospital lobbyists stand in front of you and say that allowing lawsuits over deadly negligent behaviors for those that are both unmarried and without children will raise insurance premiums, remember that the hospital got paid close to $1 million to kill my brother. I'm not just standing in front of you with a heavy grieving heart advocating for Ryan. I have two more brothers that fall into this free-kill category, one of them being a firefighter. He puts his life on the line to save others, and currently in Florida, he's being punished for focusing on this admirable career since the hospitals are allowed to kill him for money. I put my trust in all of you that you will vote in favor for the four proposed bills to end this discriminatory and unconstitutional behavior towards tax-paying, law-abiding citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry for your loss, and your story is certainly tragic.
Thank you.
Members, any questions? Okay, well, thank you again for coming, and I just put in to co-sponsor those bills. Next up, Dan Henderson.
Yes. I'm so glad you guys extended the meeting so I could get this chance. I just learned about this delegation, which is something that I've wanted to do for a while. As I said, I'm Dan Henderson. I am the president of the Palm Beach Chapter of Abate of Florida Incorporated, a nonprofit motorcycle rights group. So I represent all the motorcyclists of this county. There are a couple of things I hope you guys can do up there in the Capitol. One, for several years, we've been trying to get a Vulnerable Road Users Bill passed. This is trying to get drivers more responsible for their actions. They can actually run over a walker, a bicyclist, motorcyclist, another driver, kill them, and maybe get a $30 fine. This is something we don't think is right. Another issue, that law has not ever made it through a committee because a certain somebody doesn't like us motorcyclists in those committees. So please have an open mind. The second issue is when we register our motorcycles, $2 of that fee goes into a motorcycle awareness safety fund, which is not being, only being paid by us, not by any taxpayers, but for the last seven years, that money has disappeared. Now, you guys, as legislators, have done a good job. It passes the House, it passes the Senate, gets into the budget, and then the governor seems to kill it, and we never find out what happens to that money. And with all the motorcycles in this state, that comes up to several million dollars. Okay? I've had experiences with Senator Berman, my representative of Schlossberg, and they've been, I haven't been able to meet with the rest of you guys, but we, there's one other bill I'd love to find some sponsors for, a mandatory driver's ed bill. Let's make these roads safer. And I don't think just in the schools, it should be in every school, which unfortunately it's not, but I think it could go to people who violate any of the laws, having to take this course and pay for it at a high school, so it'd pay for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. And members, any comments? Any questions? Yes, Representative Rick Roth.
Yes, sir. I'd like for you to contact my office. I'm obviously interested in a mandatory high school driver's ed classes. We, I went through that, and I will tell you, driving to Tallahassee, six hours every week, that the drivers in South Florida are much, much less courteous than they are in, as you go further north or you go further west. So we do need driver's ed very badly to allow people to try to, to move on the highways and be courteous to other drivers, and signal, and get into the right lane, and do all kinds of things to try to make our lives safer. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Representative Schlossberg.
Thank you, and I just want to say thank you for you and your organization's help in roadway safety. You guys were very helpful when it came to passing primary enforcement of the texting while driving law. So thank you for that, and also look forward again to helping you, maybe we'll meet again, take care of some, with some of these issues that you brought up today. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. I just need you guys' help.
Thank you, sir. Angelique Contreras, last but not least. You're recognized.
Thank you. Hello, Board. My name is Angelique Contreras, and I'm a resident and concerned parent of Palm Beach County. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today. I'm here today because I must know that our state legislators stand for individual rights and personal freedoms. As many of you are aware, our great governor has called for a special session on this matter. How do you intend to stand up as a lawmaker to protect Floridians that are facing vaccine mandates for terms of employment and to protect religious rights of Floridians against Florida government, the federal government mandates? I'm sorry. Our essential workers went from being heroes to now being undesirables today. We must not turn our backs on workers who we relied on so heavily last year. Also, we will, or also, we must defend parental rights in the state of Florida and restore the parents' rights to choose their children's health care and educational needs from overreaching school boards. I'm speaking on behalf of Palm Beach County residents, and this is what Floridians are calling you for as elected officials and lawmakers, to stand up against these unlawful mandates and vaccine requirements as terms of employment or for schooling for Floridians, and to make laws to protect them against such. I hope to get the same respect and engagement as the speakers before me on this very important matter.
Thank you, Ms. Contreras. Any comments or questions? We thank you for your attendance today and appreciate your comments.
I still have 25 seconds. I was hoping that with two individuals that support individual rights and freedoms in this room, Mr. Caruso and Michael, and Mr. Roth, that you would say something on this matter, since we do have legislative coming up in the month of November.
Well, we're being challenged here, but I think that, you know, when we get up to Tallahassee in special session, we will be addressing, certainly, I hope, exemptions for, for health conditions and for religious, religious exemptions, and maybe possibly recognition of, of those that are naturally affected by COVID, that immunized by COVID, by having the disease in the past. So we've got a lot of work to do, and I don't, and I don't know the, what the final result's going to be, but we will be addressing those issues.
Thank you.
Representative Roth with one final question.
I just want to make a comment. I think, ma'am, you're suffering a little bit by being the last person. Ha ha. So I will make a comment. Obviously, as an employer, and I do have a company with over- Obviously, as an employer, and I do have a company with over 300 employees, so I am very much interested in dealing with the issue of mandating people be vaccinated. If you're a company of over 100 employees, it's very infuriating to me that our president has said this over, I think, over a month ago, but has failed to put it in writing so that we can deal with it, and the idea that I would have to have to, I cannot see myself forcing employees to be vaccinated if they don't want to, and then requiring, then obviously we would test them every week, but that would be very expensive. So stay tuned. This is, it's important that we be for vaccination, but we should be for vaccination if you want to be vaccinated. So there's a fine line there. I have been for mask mandates, I've been for a lot of other things, you know, so I'm just saying, this is a tough issue, but we'll be dealing with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, and thank you for your comments.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And before we adjourn, I wanted to thank Sheriff Bradshaw and the men in green here today, men and women in green here today providing security. The moment I called sheriff, he was like, absolutely, well, we're there, don't worry about it. So thank you to the sheriff. And if there is nothing further to come before the delegation, then Senator Berman moves we rise.
If anybody has found a pair of glasses, we had someone contact me saying they lost their glasses.